I'd like to call to order the Select Board meeting for September 10, 2024. This is a hybrid meeting that is being recorded. And I'll just quickly go through the agenda and then we'll have a roll call to start the meeting. There's, we'll have community input, then appointments and resignations, then at 7:10, Veterans Celebrations Committee, 7:35, the Friends of Center Park Agreement, 7:55, we're going to discuss the Safety Committee, 8:20, the Town Administrator Bylaw Draft Review, then at 9:10, a Town Clerk Hiring Process Discussion, 9:30, One Day Liquor License, 9:35, the TA Report, and then Warrants, Liaison Reports, and Community Input. So with that, I'd like to call to order the meeting and start with a roll call vote. We are all present, there's nobody, no member going to be on Zoom tonight, so we can just do a-
You should note that Barney's not-
Barney, we can do a voice vote, so who wants to call to order the meeting?
I'll call to order the meeting.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Is that a new thing in every state?
Yeah, well, I'm doing it. I think it's important that we've recognized, but let's, as far as attendance, Barney Arnold is absent this evening.
Not just absent, at James Taylor.
She's at James Taylor. I brought this, David, help yourself.
I don't have any dexterity to do that. By the end of the meeting, I will have opened it.
Would you like some help?
It's not interference on a must be.
These are, these are cookies that I brought for the-
But he has these easy open, the guy who did the CDs in the old days, I think he designed this back.
Oh, yeah.
All right, so, community input, do we have any? Do we have any online, anyone who would like to make a comment? All right, seeing none, I will move on to appointments and resignations. We have a particularly interesting one here to start.
Yeah.
Do you want to, hello, are you here for the Select Board meeting?
Yes.
Oh, are you here to make a public comment?
Um, I'm with Scott.
Oh, you're with Scott, all right, all right, well, then hold on for just a second.
Okay.
All right, so, unless you have it pulled up.
I have it.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Shoot, I had it, and then I went, here it is.
There you go.
I move to appoint Nathan Brown, 153 Virginia Farm Lane, as a member of the Finance Committee, termed and June 30, 2027.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion? We all know Nathan from-
Gluten, gluten for punishment.
For punishment.
All right.
It has to be a trend in this town amongst some people, David.
All right.
He's doing it in reverse order, he's going to have school board-
I'm being gluten for punishment.
Oh, there we go.
Oh my gosh, look at that.
Problem solver. The thing in front of me, and I can't open it, it's like a kid with the M&amp;M's, you know?
So we have, you have a motion second?
I have a motion second, okay, we'll do a roll, not roll, a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed.
Okay, I move to appoint Nancy Pierce as a member of the Town Meeting Study Committee, termed and at completion of the final report. Nancy is currently an associate member.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
I have a question. What is an associate member? Why do we have them?
Typically, on the Zoning Board of Appeals, we had them in the event that they, they have three primary members and then associate members, if the primary is missing, an associate can fill in, but typically, the primary members are the ones voting on the things, and that's depending on how they set up their charter or their bylaw.
I think what happened, though, with this one, was that Nancy wasn't sure she could come to all the meetings, and she asked to just be an associate member, and not have, so that, and she was doing that so that you wouldn't have a quorum problem.
Well, but they don't, right, but it works the other way, too, because she doesn't count towards the quorum either way, right? I mean, you don't count towards the quorum if you're there and you don't count-
She didn't want to be a member, then, then you would have to count her as quorum, so-
Well, now, if she's a full member.
Yes.
The problem we were getting into is we were running up against not enough of a quorum, we couldn't counter, she's at every meeting.
Okay.
That's why, but I just, I want to register, we ought to think about whether we need associate members or not.
I agree.
Okay.
Seems like a stupid thing, but anyway, I'm ready for the vote.
All right, a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Welcome Nancy, she's done a great job, by the way, she's doing a huge amount.
She would, I mean, you know, she's-
All right. With the Veterans and Celebrations Committee, does anyone object to starting five minutes earlier, or do we, do we do that? Okay, so, seeing Mr. Evans here, would you mind coming forward and speaking from the chair, introducing yourself, and then tell us about, and your colleague, oh, sorry.
She's the chair, she's the chair of the celebration.
Chair of the celebration, then.
Do I need to give my address?
Yeah, that'd be good.
So Scott Evans, 299 Hill Road, I am the Chair of the Celebrations and Veterans Committee, and-
Donovan O., 8 Acton Street, I am on the Board of the Carlisle Historical Society.
And she's also a member of the Ad Hoc 250 Committee, which is the reason that we're here.
I wonder if you could introduce one more here?
Yes.
Phil Drew.
Hi there.
How do you do?
Good, thank you. Are you on the committee as well?
Yes.
He's, he's the president of the Historical Society.
Right, Philip Drew, Bedford Road, Historical Society.
All right.
I'd like to say that this was planned because of the subject matter of the night, weariness, but I just came from a performance of Concord, so, this just happens to be luck, I guess.
Yeah, well, it adds to our feelings here, I mean, that's right.
All right. So, I did send out some material in advance, I thought I would use it as an outline, so you'd have something to refer to, and if we don't mind, we'll just follow this in order. Interrupts, anytime, ask questions, right, this is a, should be a dialogue here. Okay, so the first one, and I'm following-
Scott, before you jumped in, so we're talking about July 4, 2025?
No, we, so, we are such, we are essentially talking about today through, at least at present, through the week of April 19, 2025, but in reality, it's through December of 2026 that we're really talking about. I mean, that's considered to be our Revolutionary War-
Because people say 1776.
-set of ceremonies from-
So, I mean, I realize that we're going to focus a lot on Patriot State coming up, but is it also true that the really popular one will be July 4, 2026?
Not in this region.
Well, no, people coming elsewhere to this region.
No, no.
No, okay, all right.
They'll, they'll be, and I can address that as we get through this, but this is really, what are we planning between now and the week of April 19, we call it Patriot Week, essentially, and I'm not going beyond that to Booker Hill and all of the rest of the events that are local that will follow, those will be subsequent updates that we'll do as we go, right? I think, I think as we go, you're going to want more frequent updates, especially on what's going on in Concord, and I've included a little bit of that in the end, because I think that's, it's about time to start being cognizant of the, the ownership that you're going to have, whether you like it or not, yeah.
Okay.
So, the first one, and again, I followed sort of Ryan's suggestion, let's put the Patriot grade markers first. So, this is something that we just recently got approval from the Board to give to the SAR, Sons of American Revolution, so they went and bought the markers, there are 11 in the Central Burial Ground, and there are nine over in Green Cemetery. I think we'd have two old ones in the Central Burial Ground that can probably be left, so we'll have maybe some extras. So they've gone and purchased them, we do, we did submit, we had to submit an application, apparently, to the Historical Commission for these, so I filled out an application and we filed it, and their meeting is not until September 27, and that was part of the reason we wanted to get some approval from the Board, because we couldn't wait that long to get the markers, because it takes about six weeks lead time on them, and we're trying to get this in this fall, okay? So, the markers are in order, they should be here by the end of the month, and the cost of those markers are being paid for by the Sons of American Revolution. The coordination of ceremony that we expect to do in probably late October, maybe early November at the Lillie List, will be organized by the Celebrations Committee with support from the Historical Society. All of the costs for that, we believe, will be borne by, some of this, we put into a grant to the Department of, into Tourists and Tourism, this Revolutionary 250 Grant, if it gets approved, then we'll certainly be able to cover some of the costs there, otherwise, we'll have to figure out how to fund this one, but we expect to have a ceremony at the Central Burial Ground, and potentially one at Green Cemetery also, with maybe a procession between the two. And of course, we'll advertise it, and we'll have Minuteman, et cetera, and we'll get into the details of that as we start to formulate that now. We have the guidelines from the SAR of what they want to see, and then we will be in charge of how we want to use those guidelines. So, we will maybe seek input from the Board before we do that, just to let you know what we're doing, we can just send you a memo, I don't think it necessarily needs a meeting, right? Okay. And just to be clear, this is for the 20 patriots that are recorded as having fought in the Revolutionary War from Carlisle.
Was there a Carlisle then, or was it Concord?
It was part of Concord, that a lot of people don't know.
But we know it was Carlisle from the address?
It was a district at that point, yes. Okay, so if there are no questions there, I will move on to the 250 events. These aren't in any particular order, they're just, as we've been sort of talking about them as a committee, so. First one I have here is Esterbrook Trail Walk Coins. So this is something that was done for quite a few years by the Carlisle Minuteman prior to 1974, and they went through 1982, I think, or 1983, and they included a, a coin set, a booklet with the Revolutionary War years from '75 to '81, with a little history of them, and each coin was different, right, so this was a, a set that you could collect. So the idea here is probably we're going to do the same thing, this would be the first of a set of essentially seven coins over the six years, and the first one being in 2025.
Are these real coins? I mean, fallen coins?
No, they're, you could call them medals, I mean, they are an inch and a half in diameter, and they are, they're not cast, but they're stamped on both sides, so on one side, in the past, we've had the, on all the coins, it had a picture of Carlisle and the North Bridge with the path that the Minuteman took, Minuteman statue, and some other stuff was on that, so we thought we'd maybe keep that theme, but the other side was specific to the historical event for that particular year that they wanted to highlight. Obviously, first year was the North Bridge, other ones we had was the Booker Hill, and we had naval battles, and so every year there was one until the surrender of the British on the final year. So I can show you at another time if you want, or at the next one meeting that we have on this, I can show you the, the old coins, and I have a whole presentation on that, and what we're planning on doing for this.
Did the Minutemen take the Esterbrook Trail to get to the North Bridge?
It is clear that some of them must have taken the Esterbrook Trail, because if you're on the green, the shortest path, and again, you are walking, you are, is to take the Esterbrook Trail, but clearly, there were three or four Minutemen that were on Concord Road, there's no reason for them to come to the center of town, especially if, when the alarm was called, that they were told what was going on, and some, one of them belonged to Concord Minutemen anyway, so they probably would have gone straight to the North Bridge, so, and maybe even some went down River Road, but there's no, whatever history there was, we think was lost with some of the early town records when they were, when they disappeared.
Unless you have an alternate.
No, no. The idea here would be that we would, we'll follow a model very similar to that was done in '74, because it's going to be potentially a lot of people walking the trail, it's too cumbersome to try to do any transaction at the end of the trail. So what was followed in '74 is they had people print out, could write their name on a coupon, and when they got to the end of the trail, all they did was get a punch put in the coupon, they came back the next day to Union Hall, or the following weekend, and claimed their trail walk coin. So we thought that was probably a good process, we'd follow something similar, maybe some pre-registration, because we've got to figure out exactly what kind of volume we're talking about. In '74, they did more than 700 trail walk medals, so I'm assuming that we should be planning on somewhere around 1,000. And I work through a financial model that says, to make sure that, the idea here is that this should be self-funding, right, so there's, all of these events are intended to be self-funding, there would be no cost to the town for all of the 250 events, that's the approach we've taken. Now, we're depending on a little bit in the, the grant, if it doesn't happen, we'll have to work more revenue generation out of, out of some of the events that we have here, and that will depend on how we price the coins, they won't be free as they were in '74, they'll be a small price, we don't think that's a problem. We're also thinking, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I just was wondering about the lingle issues at the end of the Esterbrook Trail, are you going to be able to walk, actually walk down all the way through the end and go up?
Yep, yep, yep.
That's all been squared away with the-
So, my, my role on the Concord 250 Committee as the coordinator of militia companies, so I will be involved with all access for militia companies, and where they're supposed to be, and when they're supposed to be, et cetera, so I will be close to those egresses that are there, right?
Ego high, yeah.
And we'll get into that with, as we get into the Concord Public Safety Plans, et cetera, we'll get into all those details in the upcoming months. My other thought here was, a lot of the towns have a 250 coin, and I thought, well, maybe we'd look at having a 250 coin, because there's some people that don't want to walk the Esterbrook Trail, and then maybe they would like some other memento, or they'd like to send it to somebody or have something, right, we'll have a fair number of tourists probably coming to town, or people from out of town walking, so, we may be a second coin, and again, it would be a revenue generation type of product.
We have some possible logos for that.
Yeah, so the first thing we said is, we need a logo for all of our, any press releases we are doing, et cetera, and so we have five samples so far that we'll look at in the coming week, and maybe pick some favorites. I don't know whether we necessarily need to come before the Board, but if you're interested, we'd be glad to share them with you. I think we're going to work quickly on the logo to make sure that we're able to utilize that with some of the upcoming events, which will be shortly. Yeah. Okay, any questions on the coins? No, okay, you can always jump back, don't worry. Carlisle, so news and events and press releases, we've talked to the Carlisle Mosquito, they've said that they would have a staff member on our, on our committee, so we think that would be really important, it's time to start to get the marketing out there, and get people knowing not only about our events, but I think about preparation we're doing, both in this committee and eventually from the Select Board, there's a place that they hopefully will be able to go look for it all the time in the Mosquito, it'd be, you know, a box in the front, box in the back, or someplace where they could go and see what the updates are, to try to communicate with.
Do you have a website, or a spot on the town website?
Not yet, but you'll see further down, we have a website, and we have a website in the planning, I put it that way.
Okay.
Okay. We talked a little bit about the logo, we have something ready there that would use that for different, and I put down 250 merchandise, so, somebody said maybe a T-shirt, and I said, okay, so that might be good, but there'll be lots of other things, I think, that we'll come up with, and again, it'll be around what seems like the kinds of things people would want as a memento, a way to celebrate, as well as a way for us to generate some revenue, but at a minimal risk. What we don't want is a whole bunch of product and inventory sitting that we can't move, so.
This is all Carlisle-specific merch versus?
This is Carlisle-specific, this would be Carlisle 250.
Tagging out to whatever Concord's doing.
Right. Like, for instance, the 250, we were thinking, okay, you could have an old outline map of Carlisle, what it was at the time, and you could have the 20 Minutemen's names in there, you could put the logo on the front, we could put that on the back, there's a number of different things, we have, you know, the trail walk medal, or the 250 medal, and I have, from Phyllis Hughes, I have copyrights to her pen and ink drawing of the Minutemen through Esterbrook Woods, so I can make as many copies as I want, so we could make that and put it in a frame, and put the coin in it, I mean, there's lots of ideas like that, what we don't want to do is overextend ourselves, right, and, and overpromise, so, we're starting with this list, we think this is executable, and if it's not fundable, if we don't think it's feasible, then we'll, then we'll just drop it, right, we'd rather have fewer done well.
Does Concord have copyright to the image of the old North Bridge?
Yes, as well as the Minuteman statue, so I believe those copyrights have expired on those, so, you know, that's obviously been much, much discussion over the last 50, 60 years, okay, so.
Change of seal.
Public domain.
Okay. Colonial Fair is the, the next one, so this was a way, we think, to kind of get people really excited and more informed about it as we get closer. We were thinking this fall at one point, but we're too late in getting started there, so we think that maybe late March, about one month before April 19, might be a good time to do this, and this would be on the town green, weather is not too bad in late March, it hasn't been, and we'll probably get a snowstorm that day, but on the green and in Union Hall, so I've already talked about, I've talked to FRS about the hall, and we can put the reservation in for that, it's kind of doing a 10 to 3 activity, where we have planned events going on during that time, so people could come in, see certain events, like, I can get the British here, the militia here, and fight and drum music, so everybody gets a 15-minute slot per hour, and that way, people can enjoy that, the stuff that's going on at FRS, I've got somebody that's colonial woodworking, we can have a table for the Historical Society, all the events that are happening around, and other stuff that needs to be indoors, and that people can come for a couple of hours, kids' crafts, maybe colonial toys they can make, we can have a little, maybe food, maybe, not colonial food, but maybe colonial style, whatever, some people could feel like, hey, I can come and have fun with my, with my family for a couple of hours, then move on, right, that type of thing, so.
Christina, Root to Sustainability Day would be Earth Day of '25, right? That, that'll be right before the actual April 20th stuff? I mean, March is, I'm just saying, it's a bunch of, Christina, are you on this?
I'm, I'm here, I'm so sorry, I missed the first portion of the question.
Root to Sustainability Day would be, I assume, Earth Day, or a Saturday near, adjacent to Earth Day?
Correct, we haven't actually picked a, a date for 2025, but it will be a Saturday before or after Earth Day, which is the 22nd.
I can assure you will not be on the 19th.
Yeah.
Well, but you've got, okay, so the 20th and the 28th, not the-
This is all about Carlisle stuff, not Concord stuff, so.
No, I know, but Roots to Sustainability is Carlisle, and then you have this-
Yes, but I, unless they're going to go different than Concord Day, then-
I'm just saying, a lot of events you got to just be aware of.
If there are any, please let us know, because we're-
You're hearing about one, so.
We're picking, we're hoping to pick, like, late March.
Right, but aren't, isn't there also, when is Patriot's Day?
April 19th.
April 19th.
Saturday, April 19th.
Okay, so I guess, don't do it that day, Christina.
Okay, so it won't be the 19th of April, we'll aim for the 26th of April.
You're going to see that that's a bad day, to do anything in town, when we get into the, the planning piece of it, you're going to see that it's going to be a very busy day in, in town.
Okay, sorry for that, I just-
No problem.
Good to know.
Yeah. So, so the Colonial Fair would also be a revenue generation type of event there. We have the town flag, which I've now got a new owner for it, to finish it, and she's promised to get it done by early January, so I think, I trust her judgment, and that'll get done, so I think we can plan a late January or February maybe ceremony, first, I'm assuming we'll do one in town, again, the Celebrations Committee will take the lead, and then we'll do one at the State House. We have Eric Heath and his mother, who would like, she made the first one, the only one, would like to be part of that ceremony, so there'll be, that'll be a nice way to tie it together, we wanted to make sure the flag got done before the 250th, as that original flag actually was carried a couple of years before the bicentennial, but it was done for the bicentennial, so this replica will be done in time, we're not going to carry it in the 250, we'll carry the original to, to Concord for the 250th, but that flag should be hanging in the State House before then, which would be great. School projects, another, so the one thing that we, especially in this day and age, is trying to get, communicate with people about events that are going on. Most of the citizens don't read a newspaper, they don't really look at magazines, they get their news on their phone, and what pops up is what they look at, right, so there's not a lot of, let me go see what's going on with the 250. So, you know, marketing and communications is a real challenge for every town, and a good path, especially in this town, is through the school. So, kids that get involved in 250-themed projects, obviously, they come home with them, and the family gets involved, and they get much more interested in what's going on, right? So, we're working with the school to see, not maybe every grade, or it could be, you know, you can have coloring stuff from colonial era for the, for the younger kids, but you can have lots of projects, is to get that off the ground here, so that they can put it into the fall, they can put it into the spring curriculum, if they would like to tie it into the Revolutionary War, which I think the fifth graders usually do in March or April. By the way, we've got members of our Ad Hoc Committee, everybody owns a piece of this to drive and figure out, how does it happen, who's involved, what do we have done, so we're just starting to mature some of these ideas. So these next 9, 10, 11, 12 are ones that were part of the grant, were submitted by the Historical Society, they're in a different font, just because I cut and pasted them. The first one there is a visitor guide, right, to the Revolution, so this would be a new printed guide and website, so there'd be a website, the Historical Society already has a website, but this would be one that is, probably has a page devoted to this, to Revolutionary War, the Revolutionary War patriots and history, et cetera, and I was thinking, it makes a lot of sense, we should put a, something on the town website that has some information there, maybe just a calendar piece, and then you can click the link to go to this website, which would be more, a lot more content, right? So we'll work that out as we get a little bit more closer to what we think that we want to do, and there would also be a guide that could be used for people that wanted to tour the colonial homes around town, which, we're actually thinking of doing that as this, as a, an event at the Colonial Fair, where you could show up and say, take a map, or virtual one, you could download, and then you can get in your car and you could go visit, and I can have Minutemen at a number of houses, you know, to kind of mark where they are, and to, you know, whatever, fire muskets or whatever, just, just to be there, but they would use this map as part of that, and again, this was part of the submitted grant. A healed Revolutionary Open House, which would be at the Historical Society, so, when we're going to, when would that be, we'll have to talk about it, but it seems to me like the fall would be a good time to do it, instead of the winter, and we don't obviously want to do it in March, we're close to.
So we're thinking November for that.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so it'd be a downsized one there, again, Minutemen, et cetera, and get people starting to think about our colonial and Revolutionary War history. Red Lion Tavern Tour, I believe we already got permission, we can do this, we just don't have a date yet, right?
She said May, so it would be, yeah, beyond-
This would be one that would be after April 19.
It's a private residence now.
Yes, it is a private residence, correct, and I think, has John Tross talked to her? Is that him?
Filth it, actually.
Yes, to Hillary Taylor, who is the resident and owns the house, and she said she, that, well, her house was the Red Lion Tavern, the thing, all that remains of the Red Lion Tavern is a sign, it's a very remarkable sign, because it was the Red Lion Tavern, and at the beginning of the Revolution, the Patriots scrubbed out the red lion and painted a tree over it, but you can still see the outline of the lion, and we had the sign in the Historical Society house for a while, and made rubbings of it, and the lions, when you get to see them, are quite remarkable, because they have human faces and are wearing a crown, but anyway, they, they look like lions otherwise, anyhow.
So this is, this is in May, right?
Yes.
Well, obviously, beyond April 19, we'll get people to start thinking about the other events that happened. Obviously, beyond April nineteenth, we'll get people to start thinking about the other events that happened, right? And so we'll have other, other ideas for the balance of two thousand and twenty-fives. Clearly Bunker Hill and other significant events, including the, the cannons when they were done by Knox, right, during the wintertime, et cetera. And then the final evacuation day in, in Boston would be sort of the end of our typical ones. And of course, Independence Day after that, just for David. And finally, Minuteman, Minuteman House Tour, this was something that Historical Society would hire a company and a bus, right? That would do a professional tour. Again, these would be covered by the grant, so they don't, no cost to the town. But again, another, another piece to put in between now and April nineteenth. We don't want to throw everything in right up against the nineteenth of April. So we think all these are doable, and we'll, we'll figure out if any need to be trimmed going forward, or if there are any additional ideas. Unless some of you got, have some ideas. Feel free to chime in months from now, if you, right? Okay. Now I'll get to the last one. Concord update. So I've been in contact with Fred Ryan, he's head of the public safety, and he's part of this overarching control group, which will probably be located at Hanscom, will be coordinating all of the, all of the emergency and public safety assets from Hanscom Field, as well as probably all the federal people that are involved with that. But the, the planning committee in Concord, this Assistant Fire Chief and Police Captain Brian Goldman, said that they would be ready to set a date to talk to us, Acton and Bedford, sometime after the nineteenth of September. And they said, call me after the nineteenth of September, we think we will have our draft of our plan, and we'll be ready to talk, all right? So what Fred said was, their idea now is there are going to be some soft closures on Thursday, and then Friday, there are going to be a systematic closing of the roads. And in seventy-four, they closed the roads at, I think, eight PM on Friday night. I think they're thinking sooner than that this year. The, some of those interesting, I just put some pictures I took from the mosquito during the wintertime, I took a bunch of pictures from nineteen seventy-four, seventy-five. And you see one of them was like, one hundred and twenty thousand expected in nineteen seventy-five. Turned out that was about a hundred thousand, we think, there. But they were clearly worried about the number of individuals to be there. And Concord is saying, we're talking one fifty, one eighty, it could be two hundred, you really can't tell.
Most of those people, Scott, go to Concord, right?
Yes, but many came through Carlisle. And, and, so you're going to, and so if you look at just those, I only did a smattering of them, you're gonna see that the whole town turned out. Because there were, let's see, two thousand scouts coming from Chelmsford that marched to the bridge. There were fifteen hundred that came from Westford that marched to the bridge. There were, they had reserved, so the most interesting picture there is the one that shows the map of the town and where they, you might want to show that. Where there was no parking on all roads leading that one there, leading to Concord. The dark lines are where there was no parking. Then they had two satellite spots, one in Indian Hill and one up towards Esterbrook Road, and the other one over off of River Road. Those were satellite parking, primarily for Carlisle residents, seven hundred to one, eight hundred in the other.
On the street, just on the side of the street?
On the, in the neighborhoods, right, on the side of the street. Because there was no way to get into Concord. So what they decided to do was, they would put the satellite parking, and then the shuttle bus would be allowed to take them into Concord. So it was running every twenty minutes. One going to Fen off of River Road, the other one off down to Farmer's Cliff from the Indian Hill area there. And so they ran a shuttle bus, but they also had to get people from the center of town up to the satellite parking, those that didn't necessarily want to walk through the trail. So they were shuttling, for the first couple hours, shuttling people from the center of town up to the satellite parking. But they also had parking and camping at Foss Field, they had porta toilets all over town. And they had ninety-three National Guard in town, helping with traffic. The whole town, for, most of them worked twenty-four to thirty-six hours straight. Police Department, Fire Department, all the select board, all the town departments, because there were all these people coming into town, and people would just abandon their car wherever, you know, they get as far as they go, they just abandoned it.
Is this on Brian and Andy's radar, right now?
So, and that's, and that's when we'll get into the, when you get into the planning with Concord and the safety planning, then you'll get a much better idea of what we're talking about. And then we'll have to figure out, you guys will have to figure out, I'll help you if you want, have to figure out, so what does this mean to Carlisle? And what do we need to plan for and hope the heck that we don't get twenty-five thousand people or thirty thousand people? Because clearly, if they find out that they can get close through Carlisle, world will spread like that, and.
Scott, walk us through this, like, where, you're driving from Westford or Chelmsford or wherever, where, where do you get stopped and diverted?
Well, you would get stopped right at the Concord border. That's where the border is closed, and then.
From the south, but also from the other directions that are not shown?
Well, we're to the north, right? So you're all, you're going south no matter what, so.
I understand that, people are coming not from the south, they're coming down or left or right.
Concord's gonna close.
So if they come in from Acton, they can take this street here, but when they get here, they're gonna get stopped. And now, there's no parking, so if you do the same thing here, there's no parking here. Now they have to go someplace, what are they gonna go?
But shouldn't we really stop them at the border? Because then they'll be noodling around.
This is the next meeting, we'll, we'll come and get rid of the parking.
We can decide how we want to handle it.
But last time, let's just talk about last time. Last time they were allowed to drive and meander around, like.
Well, we had, we had signs, right? So if there was, parking was full at the satellite parking place, we'd say, okay, you have to go to the transfer station and park there, we're on a shuttle bus. Or you have to park over here down Foss Field, and then maybe you shuttle down. So we have to figure out how to handle these visitors. You can't just turn them away, right?
So, I, this is, this is a really great introduction. I can see the parking is going to be one of the main issues that we're gonna have to deal with as a town. We do have other agenda items, so I kind of need to wrap it up.
I was just to wet your.
That's great, but I.
And this is all April ninth, this is all focused on Patriots Day.
It's the day before.
April nineteenth is the big for us.
And I showed you what was going on, there's a big, there's a big bolus of stuff on Patriots Week, it's Saturday, Sunday, Monday.
This is just one day, right?
Well, we, we also have the March event, our Colonial Fair.
He's talking about this, this one, the visitors is gonna be, starting Friday, Friday during the day, people will try to go down, some on Thursday night, but that'll be when it starts. So it's Friday during the day till Saturday night, then you're done, then you're done. Sunday, Monday, not a problem.
Okay.
Great, so we will have you back when we get more on parking and stuff, but thank you for that, it's really helpful.
Don't fall asleep on this.
Scott, Scott, I'm your liaison, I am, and I will be attending any, can you mail me when you have meetings?
Sure, I can even bring you cookies.
You can't open them, though.
Bring it on a plate for them, maybe it'll be easier to get.
Scott, when's the, the next meeting, though, soon?
Well, our next meeting for the ad hoc committee was supposed to be tomorrow night, but I think what we'll do is, we'll push it out a couple of weeks, so we can mature some of these things. I will absolutely copy you on that.
All right, thank you, thanks for coming.
I think the select board, we should all get outfits.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. We're gonna be parking cars too, or whatever.
Give him a musket and I'll, I'll take him.
Oh, were they?
You'll be the guy turning them away at the border. Eight minutes to get it ready to fire.
All right, David, can you pass the cookies, please?
All right.
All right.
All right, so we're gonna move on to the Friends of Center Park next. Do you wanna come forward, Ms. Saylor?
Yep.
Introduce yourself.
My name is Allison Saylor, and I am the president of Friends of Center Park. And we are coming up to the fifth year anniversary of having an agreement with the town, and so I'm here to do and sign the re-up. I think it's all set, and I'm, if somebody has a pen, I'll sign it. I talked last time about how wonderful Center Park is, so I don't need to go over that again.
All right.
Any questions?
Are there any questions from the select board?
We saw the agreement in our package.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, if there are none, maybe someone could make a motion.
Uh, do you want? Move to accept the terms of agreement between the Town of Carlisle and the Friends of Center Park, Inc., as presented.
Second.
Okay, are there any thoughts or comments internally here, or not internally, but? I think everyone's on board with the agreement, it's been, okay.
I think it, it was everything we discussed last time.
It was, that's, seemed like it was good. All right, so we'll do a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Okay, you have a new agreement, we'll get that signed and.
Do you want me to sign it tonight, or is that?
I'll send it to you electronically.
Oh, I can handle that. Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you. Oh my goodness, we're ahead of schedule. Quick.
Famous last word.
Well, for now.
Well, we can do the safety, she's here.
Is she here?
Yes, she's here.
Can we do that, or is that a public, I mean, there's gonna be, are there any people may want to?
I would wait on that.
I would wait on it.
Do the administrative report or look at?
Yeah, TA report, maybe? Or any of the other things, the one-day liquor license, we can roll through that.
Start with that.
One-day liquor license, that's where we're going? So, hang on. Move to approve the application submitted by Martha Feeney Patton on behalf of the Gleeson Library Endowment for the insurance, sorry, the issuance of a one-day special license to serve beer and wine at a nonprofit fundraising event to be held on November sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, during the hours of six-thirty PM through nine-thirty PM at twenty-two Bedford Road, Carlisle, Mass.
Second.
Okay, I will note that the chief of police has signed this, so.
And I encourage you all to come, it's called Books and Beers, Brews, it's like Brews and Books, or Brews or something like that. It's fun, it's gotta be a professional trivia guy, it's a pub.
Great.
And the Reed Homemade Wine is also featured here.
Oh, that's good to know.
He makes good wine, actually.
That may change my vote on the liquor license, though.
Oh, that's really cool.
It's all designed to liberate you from your checkbook.
All right, so unless there are more comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, none opposed, so I'll sign that.
Is there, as we're talking through the, the events and all this other stuff, is there a list that's starting to come together of different things we should start to reserve on our calendar?
Dates, like?
Dates and things, like typically, like, April week is a week we go away, but it sounds like we're probably gonna want to be here for.
That's a big one this time, the two-fifty.
But in terms of other things where we should be starting to block them off?
Yeah, that's, that's a good.
I would appreciate that.
So this is the start or the end of the April break? Patriots is usually the start, right?
April break's later this year.
Really? It always starts with.
Do they have school at?
I don't know about that.
Yeah, they're on April break during this period.
Right.
April.
Parents of school-aged children, please note.
No, they are.
Actually, it's the beginning of April break, so.
Yeah, beginning.
They have school on that Friday.
And I'll tell you, I have a senior in high school, and they're planning events around this, meaning they're, you know, this is a big deal.
Yeah.
Oh, gosh, and Good Friday's on the eighteenth as well. So this is.
And Easter's on the twentieth, so there's, there's a lot.
Lot going on.
And Earth Day's the twenty-second. I take out the trash on the twenty-third. Every Wednesday. It's the.
All right.
Yeah.
Twenty, the week of the.
Do you want to do the cemetery deeds?
Okay, hang on, let me get back to the files.
It's late April, late Easter this year.
Town Clerk, ABC, TA report, Morris, I don't have cemetery deeds.
We don't have deeds.
Oh, it says we did. I have them right here.
Those are old ones this year.
Those are old ones this year.
Okay.
Now we get TA to sign those.
All right. The TA report? Yeah, can we do a little of the TA report?
Let's do it.
All right.
Sorry, I was there and I got distracted, it's you. Okay, so one big thing we're considering right now in Town Hall is this first floor space. So some recent vacancies, and I don't mean to categorize the loss of Peggy as a vacancy, but the, the opportunity to look at space downstairs between the Council and Aging and Human Services in the Town Clerk's office is something that we're discussing. So we really want to think strategic and long-term about what public space, how that space would be best used for, for, for public services. So I have a conversation with the Council on Aging and Human Services, I do believe your liaison will be there as well, to talk about how to bridge community space for the Council on Aging from now until, and if there is a senior center or a community center, what would the next, because that's gonna be several years. So what would the next few years be, and how can we leverage Town Hall for that? So just want to make you aware of that conversation, obviously bring more details as that becomes more solid. Also, if you've been in the Council on Aging and Human Service Office, you know that the number of employees compared to the spaces is not, is not conducive to good work, and to the availability of the public to come in that office. So all things that we're considering.
David, are you the liaison?
Two.
To, who's, who's?
Barney is the liaison.
Who's Barney, sorry, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And the Assistant Town Administrator is here.
Sure, I will do that one.
Excellent.
So the Planning Board's scheduled to appoint Noel Valand as the new Planning, Zoning, and Land Use Assistant, starting Tuesday, September seventeenth. So she'll be working under Julie, but she'll also be helping the ZBA, and then also General Land Use. She has a bachelor's in environmental science and a minor in climate change and sustainability, so she is really excited to be part of the team. We're still collecting resumes for the DPW Heavy Equipment Operator, also the Facility Technician position, that will be helping all the town buildings. And we're about to post the Social Services Manager position for COAHHS, and I'll be internally for two weeks. And if it's still not filled, then we will post externally. And then we'll also be hosting a sexual harassment and discrimination and workplace training for all non-school employees, including part-time employees, on September twenty-sixth. And we'll offer two different times to do it, it's three hours for the full session. And so this will be part of the comprehensive training will be required, making sure all employees are doing right now. They do, you know, read and abide by the sexual harassment policy, but this will be up-to-date, relevant information of, you know, entitled to that information.
And Aubrey's been working on acknowledgement of personnel policies, updating the personnel policies, which we'll come to you before they're updated. And then IT training for every employee, and properly tracking that, and making it part of an annual training package for all employees. So it's, it's a big lift, Aubrey's done a great job with it. It's, it's overdue, of course, but it's also harder than it sounds. When you're running a town with one- and two-person departments, to gather everybody, to include public safety and DPW at one time to do trainings is hard. So we're trying to balance operations with training, to make sure that we're hitting all of the goals of the select board. More information to come on that. All right, update for the Fall Town Meeting. So the select board intimated at their last meeting that the Town Administrative Bylaw would not be ready for the fall. Last night, the Planning Board did the same with their ADU bylaw, so they have said that they will not be bringing it forward this fall. The only other articles that we're tracking, that you're tracking, are the Chapter two-hundred A, Section nine A, or the tailings that Sandy brought before you. Change in bylaws to the Veterans Celebrations Committee, not to change them, but to actually codify that, that name in the town bylaws, it's a very simple article. And then we talked a little bit last time about a conservation restriction transfer that's being proposed. I reached, I reached out to that group, and they said there's no timing necessary for the fall, so that can also wait till the spring. All of this is to say, you will be deciding at your next meeting whether or not to hold the Fall Town Meeting. We do not have anything of significance to bring to you for a Fall Town Meeting right now. Of course, that's your call, but I'm trying to get.
Will the Town Meeting Committee be talking about this and maybe thinking about how to format a Spring Town Meeting that would, might be going over two days?
We've talked about that, I think, I think not having Fall Town Meeting is probably helpful, because most of the stuff we're thinking about doing, we're not really ready yet to implement. Our original plan was that we would pilot certain things at Fall Town Meeting, and then enact them in Spring Town Meeting, but most of those things are not really ready to be done. And if it's a weak town meeting, which it will be, if we had it, it would be very weak, it wouldn't be indicative anyway. So I think it's better for us just to wait, as far as one day or two days, I mean, that's really our call. You know, I think we have to look at the, the pile of things that's there and decide. That's a whole nother dynamic that, you know, to be considered, but we're not, we haven't really evaluated that.
All right, continuing on, I was joined by a special guest, Scott, today at my coffee hour. Sometimes we get a lot of people and sometimes we don't, just being transparent, but we do wanna be available outside of Town Hall for people to speak to us. Today, and I didn't plan it, Scott, just because the boss was there, but a lot of people came, a very robust conversation at... First, so thank you.
Can you, can you take, we've got a minute or two, can you share anything, issues? There are like things that came up that people were concerned about? Just as helpful for us to...
Yeah, I mean, there, so there were, what, four residents there? And, I mean, the topics range from a wide range of topics in terms of cemetery deeds or the Cemetery Task Force to some of the challenges that seniors face in Carlisle regarding property tax and how that relates to how appealing it is for seniors in Carlisle. And then, you know, related to that, assessment issues in terms of people seeing increases in their individual assessments, accessory apartments, Highland Building, police station, fire station, so it was a wide range of topics. I would say that for me, it was beneficial to do this, just to hear from folks directly. And I thought the comments, I appreciate that people took their time to come and sit with us. The comments were substantive, there was good discussion, interesting to hear the different perspectives and challenges people face. And I thought it was, for me, it was very productive to hear the different perspectives.
Town structure comes up a lot, so for the Town Assembly Committee, one of the, I think, well-informed residents who came said Town Meeting feels like a rubber stamp, but doesn't know really how to make it less so they want an efficient Town Meeting.
What was the demographic, like Town Meeting, more like Town Meeting?
Yeah.
But it'd be great to rotate, we should all do that.
I'd love to.
I'd love to.
Yeah, pick one of us next time.
Will do.
Next one's in the park or something.
And I think, I think there are, for certain residents, I think it's a good forum for them to get their perspective across versus feeling like standing up at Town Meeting and saying something, or attending a public meeting is not necessarily always the best forum for people to represent their perspective. So I think it's, I think it's just good to make those opportunities available and it's a good way to talk to folks and educate them and give them our perspective back and, you know, get them more involved.
Great.
So the next big outreach event this fall is what we're calling Town Hall in the Park. We have several events planned, a touch-of-truck with Public Safety and the DPW, and then town departments going out for a couple hours in the morning, a couple hours in the afternoon to talk to residents about big issues. And you can probably tick them off if you want to, MBTA communities, ADU on the planning side. I wanna talk about building projects, if anybody wants to talk about that. And a bunch of departments have already signed on and they're excited to get outside of the park. Hopefully, it's a beautiful day and our residents can show up. We're hoping to draw a younger demographic with the touch-of-truck event for children, et cetera.
Date was that planned for?
October 2nd.
Oh, I'm not gonna be up here.
Okay, the LSC is asking the Select Board to consider authorizing a donation account for their maintenance work on the town's conservation lands. Nothing for you to move on there yet, but just letting you know. I do anticipate a rash of these, so just something to consider. The 26 budget, so capital planning began in earnest this month. We have a slew of capital meetings where my working group, grabbing people from the Finance Committee and David from the Select Board, in order to talk about capital and how that plan's gonna come together for your first draft read on October 8th. And that's supposed to inform your goals and budget discussions for FY '26 on October 8th. That is going on.
It's a good meeting.
So we talked about Town Hall, Police, Fire, Rec, and then we're gonna talk about School and Facilities, and then we're gonna talk about Roads and Road Plans and DPW equipment. Okay, do you want me to continue, or do you wanna...
No, I think it's now time to switch over, if that's okay? All right, so we're moving on to our next agenda item, which is the Safety Committee. And I think we're gonna get an initial report and talk about North Road and Rutland Street. So does the TA wanna kick it off, or how do you...
Okay, so I have Laura here, so I'll just introduce her. So Laura Harrison is the newly-appointed Chair of the Safety Committee. The Safety Committee has organized itself, has committed to learning a lot about the town, the town structure, and created a bunch of goals, and is now gonna move into recommending things to you. However, there was an initial recommendation that Laura will present to you stemming from discussions about North Road and Rutland Street and some of the dangerous things precipitated by the event that happened with the young child not too long ago.
Great.
I'm Laura.
Perfect, thanks, Ryan, can you all hear me okay?
Yeah, I can hear you great.
Fantastic, thank you for that and thank you for your time tonight. I just wanted to take a minute to talk about the work we've done so far, how we're thinking about the committee's mission and the recommendation that we submitted during the review. The committee met for the first time on August 14th. During that meeting, we reviewed the committee charter and we discussed some top-line goals from across our members. Broadly, the committee intends to help review and address concerns related to road safety, line pating signage, guardrails, pathways, accessibility, and employee safety. To do so, we are reviewing resident concerns, we're gathering data to assess town intersections, we are reviewing complete streets and other town initiatives, and we plan to invite a town council and a town engineer to help educate the group about the constraints that we're operating under. So this work will serve to create a rare test list and the tools with which we can make further recommendations. Several members of the committee immediately raised the topic of the intersection of North Road and Rutland Street, where there have been multiple recent accidents, the most recent of which was very serious. In addition to continued speed enforcement on both streets, we discussed a number of possible solutions, and Jim Hall actually helped us identify a few measures that could potentially be taken immediately. We conducted a site visit to North Road and Rutland Street just two days after that, on August 16th. At that visit, DPW put together a plan to trim back trees and brush to improve landscape, to repaint and move the stop lines on North Road, and to add warning signs in advance of the intersection. That portion of the work is actually now complete. But we also discussed adding stop signs on Rutland Street to create a four-way stop there, similar to what was done successfully just south of there at the three-way intersection on Rutland Street and East Streets. The committee met again on September 4th, where we further discussed and go unanimously on this action. We believe that this step is appropriate, given the speed and the frequency of traffic through the intersection, and Chief Amendola has offered additional police detail to help with the initial adjustment. That's really it, I really appreciate your time and attention on the matter. I am, of course, happy to talk further about the recommendation or other committee work as needed.
Sounds good.
Just for my own benefit, in terms of adding stop signs to a road, is there, what's the process for that? Is that just something that the Select Board votes that?
Well, it depends on the road, if it were a state road, you have to do, go through some...
Couldn't do it on 25th.
But for, just one of our roads, we can do it where we think it's needed.
That's one of the things that Laura just mentioned in the committee, why Town Council and the town engineers are coming, so that they can answer, the committee asks, can we do this, can we do that, or what can we recommend to the Select Board? So they're gonna educate themselves, but this one is Select Board purview, the stop sign.
Okay, because when we did the Rotary, I know there were a lot of regulations around signage and mandates, which is why there's so many.
Because it's state road, right?
That's a state road.
Not only state road, but the funding came from the state, so you were required to follow mastodors.
Lots of strings attached.
Gotcha, okay.
We don't have anything to vote on tonight?
Yeah, we do.
We do have the motion of the, I just wondered, you had adding dangerous intersection signs, what is, what does that look like, what is a dangerous...
So what it would look like is approximately 100, 200 feet before the intersection, it's a yellow diamond that says Dangerous Intersection Ahead. So that would actually go under the, yeah, it looks like that.
Okay.
Dangerous intersection.
I could've looked it up, I'm sorry.
And now the poll will also have a stop sign ahead for a while, until people get used to it. And then it'll lead into the stop sign, so it's a way to, it's a control measure to slow people down.
I go through that intersection on a fairly regular basis and I think it's a great idea. I don't see a stop sign impeding the flow of traffic on that.
There's now a two-way, right?
There's a two-way coming on North Road. But it's, but there's always that moment where you cross, where you're just like...
I go every day that way and I...
Run it and pray no one's...
Put their, poke their little nose out and...
And it's not a, it's not a heavily, it's not like you're gonna get traffic backups or anything there.
North Road has poor sight lines, which is what causes the problem.
Yes.
And they've improved the sight lines, and they have also put the stop, the line closer to the intersection so you can actually see, but it's still tricky.
No, and I, yeah, it just seems like a good recommendation, and I certainly support it.
So staff does serve on this committee an advisory role, so both chiefs are involved, Jim's involved. I'm there at most meetings. The most enlightening comment for me from Chief Amendola was they have done speed studies there, and because the speed limit is what it is, it, and we were standing there, it feels like people are flying, but they are within the speed limit. So there's not a lot you can do in terms of enforcement to slow it down, which is why he was in favor, and the Fire Chief was in favor, having to deal with accidents and other responses, of creating a situation where...
You have to stop.
At least three people are gonna stop, right? So even in the worst-case scenario, you have one more chance to not have an accident.
Right.
Okay.
And I wanted to make it clear, the committee's not set on signing everywhere and putting stop signs everywhere around town. This one is just of particular interest because of the history of it.
So the only thing for you, Mr. Chair, is whether you want the protocol of allowing the public to comment for a month or two weeks or whatever? I don't care, but...
I generally like that. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that. And I know that, you know, we wanna move quickly and be responsive to safety concerns, but we're also a public board and always seek public input because these are other citizens who wanna weigh in. Is there anyone who has other thoughts? I mean, Kate, you've been on the committee, so you know all...
Well, it says Committee of Citizens.
It is a committee.
And people can also, you know, have input there.
That's true, almost everything we do. We still, we still use these similar things for one, I don't care, but...
What would the forum be for the public input?
They would just write you.
They would just email?
Right. This is, in my view, the first time, but I guess they've had a public meeting for the Safety Committee, so you could say, you know, informed citizens would view that, and maybe it's written about in the mosquito, and, which it was, I believe. And they had, you know, people can talk about it, and if they had comments or opinions, they could share it with us or with that committee. We just haven't had, we've had this meeting and then we're voting on it. And so I generally like to have, I mean, I just think is, but I'm sympathetic to safety and the, you know, urgent nature of changing things if they're unsafe conditions.
What's the lead, like, what, the process to actually install the stop signs, is that what's entailed there? Is that a pretty quick thing?
You order them and you pop them in.
Doesn't take six months, like, everything else?
It's about an hour.
Oh, really? Okay.
But I don't, I don't see a flood of people coming for this particular issue, but it's really about the policy and the precedent of if we're putting up signs in town.
Two weeks, two weeks, no.
I think...
I don't wanna go on record, then there'll be an accident and I'll look like an idiot, but generally, we... If we feel it's an emergency, we should do it. Otherwise, we should give it the two weeks, as our policy.
I would tend to agree with that, but I've, you know...
We don't know, it might happen in two weeks, so... To Scott's question, Ryan, if we said yes tonight, when are the stop signs in?
As soon as Jim gets them, so I would, I don't think it would take more than two weeks.
The other thing we could do is, we could have that, we don't have a policy in place, we could set that as our policy going forward and approve this, if some people wanted to.
Were there any perspectives or comments about reasons not to put in stop signs in any of this discussion? My thing is, I just don't know what I would hear that would change my opinion on this one.
Right, I mean, except for somebody just complaining, it's, you know...
I like to drive fast.
Honestly, we had, somebody complained, the Rutland, the third stop sign on Rutland, somebody complained because they had a stick shift and they thought it was gonna be hard for them to start back up, you know, and that was the one complaint we had about that, we put it in.
It's good practice.
Yeah, exactly, you know. I think something like this, you know, we also have all of our safety, you know, staff who, that were in favor of this, we had a terrible accident there. It wasn't the first accident, and I think, I don't think we should wait two weeks to see if somebody's gonna come...
I'm in favor, but I, I'm in favor of voting on this tonight, but I do think we should, maybe also tonight, just have a, put in place, we, a policy or a practice for...
We have already, right?
Well, and Laura, I think I would ask you as the Chair, and, you know, obviously the liaison, or Kate, you're officially on it, so, but maybe in the future, that we work out some process where you bring this, you know, to the Board, or at least it gets in the TA report a week before, and we ask for public comment, somehow we get the word out, just because I think it's good government to have public input, and we said this one, well, we can't think of anything, but that's why there's the public, they think of things that we don't think of, so...
Chance you, Scott, I mean, I don't, we used to do this, we used to say, the motion used to be a two-part. The first of which was waive our standard practice of, maybe that was a school thing. I moved to waive our standard practice of waiting, and then we approved the motion, so...
All right, well, why don't we, why don't we vote on this tonight to pass this? But I think going forward, maybe the Chair of the Safety Committee can kinda take that under advisement and make sure that you get the information to us and so we can disseminate it. And I think it's good to have even the mosquito as part of that, you know, to get the word out, just because it's helpful.
Yeah.
Okay, so, any other motion?
I'll do it. I move to direct the Town Administrator to install a four-way stop at the intersection of North Road and Rutland Street per the recommendation of the Safety Committee.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll just do a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. All right.
Thank you, yeah, thank you to you and your committee.
Thanks, Lauren, thanks for all the work for the committee, I mean, that's really nice that they're...
Thanks so much, this is really important, I'm thrilled.
Sure, sure, well, and we look forward to seeing, yeah, more good work ahead. Okay, all right, moving along.
Just no red lights.
We're early on the TA bylaw draft review, but I think that's okay because...
There's gonna be lots of, lots of deliberating ahead of us.
Lots of deliberating, all right. All right, so I had wanted to arrange this a little differently than what we had done, or we've started this. We started down the road first kind of identifying what we may wanna do, which is a possible TA bylaw that we'd wanna bring before the town or potentially the legislature. We've heard from Town Council at this point about how that may have to move forward. I have asked Town Council for some more information on what would need to go before the legislature and what would not need to, just so that we have that information readily available. And they'll be producing that, it'll probably be in the next packet. But in this step, I thought it was important that we really kind of figure out as a Board what we as a Board would like to delegate to the Town Administrator. And I kinda put that memo in the packet. The purpose is of this, I think, that the Board is said to improve the functioning and effectiveness of Carlisle's daytime staff and administration, to free up time for the Select Board to focus on the policy priorities of the town, and three, to provide the existing Town Administrator and future Town Administrators a clear set of roles and responsibilities that will aid in directing a well-functioning town government. So given that, we kind of put together categories to consider. And what I'd like to do tonight is to go through each of these bullets and see if we can reach some type of consensus as a Select Board as to what we would want to, what authority we might wanna delegate to the TA. We can certainly ask the TA who's here if we have questions on these, but as far as, you know, but if there are other things that come up, that's, you know, what we wanna talk about as well. The point here is to, once we can agree on these, or we think we know what we wanna do, we can then make sure those are in a draft bylaw. Many of them may already be captured in the draft that Kate put forward, but I think it's important to have this step first, and then we'll put them in the draft bylaw, we'll have Council review it, and then we'll go out to all of the committees that we're the liaison to and really talk about this, and put this out there and explain why we think this might be a good idea. And from there, try to, you know, assuming we wanna do it, build support, and then take it to Town Meeting in the spring. So that's kind of the path that I'm thinking. So going through these categories, if you have them, and maybe the Town Administrator can put these up on the screen. So going through these categories, if you have them, and maybe the town administrator can put these up on the screen just so that everybody can see them.
Aubrey, can you take notes on this, please?
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah. So the first category to consider is the appointment authority.
But before...
Okay.
I do like your approach, but taxometrically...
Yeah.
Let's first say above these details, 'cause you have, in your second bullet there, is there any check on this power? I would say the first thing is, what, I think we heard from council that we, the select board, have the authority to delegate anything that, any authority we have, we can delegate. That's kinda what I remember from council. And I just wanna get an understanding, so we'll delegate a bunch of things, but don't we always have the, the right to recall it? In anything, it's not just appointments. Anything we change our mind about, we can just pull back, right?
Are you talking about once we have a TA bylaw?
Yes, yes.
Not if it's a bylaw.
Not if it's a bylaw.
The town can pull it back, and once it's a bylaw, we can go to town meeting.
So we are actually moving the authority from ourselves to a guy who works for us.
Correct. And, and it may be, David, that out of these discussions, we determine that a bylaw is not as what we want and we may go for policies or something.
Right, but, okay, so let's just set the ground...
But then every board can then change those policies.
I know, no, no, I get that. I don't wanna rehash. We've done all that.
Okay.
So, all right, so we have a set of authorities that come to us from the MGL or whatever, right? And we can decide either bylaw or policy or whatever, we can delegate to the TA. But again, globally, so maybe we can't recall the, we can't undo the bylaw, but we can always build in SB oversight on anything, right? Not just appointments or...
Which, which can be executed or not. I mean, we could waive it also.
We can waive it anytime we want, but I mean, we...
I think you wanna put something in.
So I think we want something. So I think some of these questions don't have to be functional specific. They can be addressed by that mechanism.
Yes. I just think this is helpful because we tried to illuminate what are the things we may wanna give up or power we wanna give up.
Right, okay, fairness.
Let's just use this as a guide, David and everyone, and go. So who can the TA appoint or who can the TA not appoint? So this is on the appointment authority. And in there, we have all employees, police chief, fire chief, others, exclusions. The school, I don't, don't have a question mark near because we are not going to appoint and that's gonna be clear that we're not, we're not involved in the school. But the library, I don't know if we have the authority. Again, we will find out those. But the question is what types of things, library, fire department, board of health, conscom, others. And this is for...
And town clerk, which...
Yeah, I, I kinda like to work from a set of principles.
Okay.
And I think one of the principles for me is we are talking about the operation of town hall. The school is not in the town hall. The library's not in the town hall. So I, I would say of the appointments, the ones that I'm interested in seeing being appointed and managed more centrally, it would be the ones that are kind of, you know, the, the land use boards, the assessors, the...
So can I offer a, a counter opinion on that?
Okay.
I agree with later, you know, management of town hall and buildings, time of operation. And yes, I'd say also, well, also to some degree, performance reviews, normative things with HR. But not being located physically in this building, to me, makes no difference functionally to things that are integral to what we have as authority over, police, fire...
I know, but the library...
The library, maybe we don't even have the authority. I don't...
A, we don't have the authority, but beyond that, if we did not have a library, this town would still, we would still have, you know, sort of the essential, um, government functions would be taken care of, right? I'm, I'm, I'm thinking essential government functions.
Police and fire are not?
No, no, they are. I didn't say they weren't, but...
I, I think you're getting a little tangled up in, in an artificial structure. That's my feeling.
Okay, well, maybe.
The hours of town hall, dress code, whatever. I know, but I'm saying, I buy, I agree with Kate's argument about location for those things, but I don't agree if you say, as you just did, essential government functions. To me, essential government functions, which of those statutorily do we have no authority over? Schools, okay, we understand. Library, maybe, we gotta figure that out. And pretty much everything else we do, right? Now, there are some things which I'm not clear on, like, does a strong chief has the right to hire his own people? Is that one of the things of a strong chief? And...
And operate his own equipment and, uh...
Okay. I mean, TPW is not in here, but they're clearly town hall employees, right?
Yes.
And then the other question I have is the mandate of board of health. Do they have the authority to hire a health agent?
Yes.
They do.
Yeah.
So those are the ones that are in the bucket of, the gray bucket.
Yeah, that's...
But there are others that aren't located here, like TPW that, and police, that our authority line is pretty clear, right?
Well, the police, only because we have a, a weak chief and not a strong chief. If we're a strong chief, we would not have the authority.
We are a weak chief, so...
Yeah.
We don't mean that pejoratively, Andrew.
Well, again, it's, it's, it's coming up with, and I think it's easier to work on the exclusions than on the inclusions here, just because it seems like I, I...
We're talking appointments, not...
We're not talking...
When we say appointments, we're not talking about hiring.
Yes, we're talking, yes.
So we're talking, we're not talking about appointments in terms of committee appointments. We're talking...
Not yet, but we will.
Hiring and...
Hiring and firing within the town structure of town employees, so the daytime government.
Yeah.
So the question is, and I think Barney had some comments she made just in preparation for this, but police, fire, and town clerk were her thing that she thought that we should have oversee.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
Conscom is an appointed board by us?
It's, yes, it's appointed, but they have the authority to point their...
But through us?
No.
Okay, independent.
Independently.
And planning board is elected, but they don't have the authority to hire a planner.
Yes, they do.
They do.
Yes. So the rea, so going back to what I was trying to get at, maybe I didn't say it quite properly. I would also like to ensure that we have, that we are following best practices of HR. Because if some board is doing it, they may or may not be following best practice nor law in their hiring. And so I would like to have some mechanism for us to be ensuring that things are done properly in the hiring process. Now, I think they, they should still have the final word, but we need, I think, our HR department needs to be overseeing all hiring and firing to ensure that is done correctly. And we don't have that currently. We have no mechanism for doing that.
Well, and by nature of our town and our size, I mean, I, again, it's, silos are, are not our friend here. In, in some larger towns, there may be more case for that. But I think one of the things you hear feedback on and, you know, we see ourselves is when you have silos, it can sometimes work against kind of the needs to have staff that can pitch in at different places at different times. And so I think within that, one of my higher level goals would be to empower the town administrator to essentially remove those silos and have control over staff so they can be deployed in the most efficient way and shared, shared when necessary. And so wherever those silos exist, it's kinda where I would see the town administrator having some authority to hire and, and do performance reviews and have a say. Because I think that's, one of, one of my key goals would be to, would be to counter those existing silos. So, um, you know, I don't know where police and fire are, you know, it's, it's kind of a different evaluation process of the employees, so I, you know, we can discuss that. But I think within kind of, certainly town hall and the areas we've talked about, I would wanna see the, the town administrator have the authority.
Right. So when we're talking about HR in particular, of daytime staff. So for example, we're not talking about the planning board. We, we're not saying we wanna change the structure of the planning board and have it, you know, appointed by the town administrator, just to be clear. We're gonna keep it as an elected board. It's, we're talking about the staffing of that board because currently the staffing is, in theory, controlled by that, that board in and of itself. So the planning board or the, the...
Health agent.
The, the board of health, another one would be the conscom. That, those boards in particular, the, the board of health is elected, but the board of health's, you know, administrator who is there is actually, reports to the chair of the board of health for, you know, administrative duties. But there's, the only oversight is the chair or is the board itself. And so we're talking about changing that structure so that we have a more comprehensive HR structure throughout the daytime government, right?
Yeah, which is operated and overseen by the daytime government, who is actually on site and can, is in a which, a position to do that evaluation, which we...
Would seem to make a lot of sense. So I think, are we all in agreement that we would like that across all boards?
I, you know, I would like, yes, of course, but I'm, I'm trying to work this crazy quilt. Ryan, to my recollection, hired Julie as town planner. No, didn't? Planning board did?
I did. So we had a memorandum of agreement with the planning board that I would assist in the hiring process.
Okay, so you assisted.
So same, same thing. You heard Aubrey give a report tonight of hiring the, the planning board assistant?
Yeah.
So she said the planning board appointed it, but we, we have been given delegated authority to help with hiring.
That's true, a memorandum.
Which is what we would like to have from our boards.
Right, okay. So, but we can't codify in a by, so...
In a bylaw, we could.
In a legislature.
In a legislature, yes.
Again, I don't wanna get into the mechanics tonight of that. I would rather have the, this is just so much philosophical.
Like, what would you like it to be?
Whatever we would like it to be. And then we're gonna go through with the attorneys to figure out, okay, what...
So what I'm hearing is...
Hold on one second.
No, and so it's like, so I'd like to see town administrator, org chart, like, direct solid lines from all the different departments.
Yes.
Solid line from the TA up to the select board and then dotted line to the different, um, specific boards, right?
Yeah.
Right. So you have an individual who says, "I'm gonna do as I please because the org chart says I have a dotted line to this other board." Like, does the solid line beat the dotted line?
Well, yeah, the solid, in my, in my, the solid line is an actual line. The dotted line is just a, you know...
Sorry.
Okay. But I, I think it's important that we have, again, I haven't seen an org chart. Imagine if we looked at the org chart of how things work today. It's fairly complicated and there's lots of different...
I mean, I don't think so. I think there's a few, I, I think we need to distinguish between hiring and firing and administering, like, these are your working hours, here's the performance review process, blah, blah, blah. Right. I'm all for the latter.
That's, the hiring and firing will be on the next thing.
Well, no, this is appointment, this is hiring.
Well, you're right.
So, I mean, I think that's where we started.
That's hiring, right?
Right. Hiring is a very special thing and it sounds like...
Firing authority.
Hiring and firing to me go together. They don't go apart. Everything in between hiring and firing is administrative and I'm okay with that. I'm not okay with the other one, not 'cause I don't want it, 'cause I think it's gonna be a minefield of conflicting legal things.
Well, I, I, I think if we articulate our goal and then that's where we lean on town council to say this is...
Well, I like what happened, I guess, with planning board is there was a memorandum of understanding.
Right.
With that board.
With that board. You may have to do that with the boards.
But that was kind of an interim step, I think. What we're trying to do, if, if we want, is to really formalize this.
You don't need memorandums in the future.
Right. This has become, and it's not just for the current TA. This is trying to set the town up for the future to be more efficient and effective with its HRs. As Scott pointed out, you know, one of the benefits would be shared services, whatever that might be, you know. The, the one person managing that would be, or an authority doing that, would be more effective, I think.
Yeah, and I think you hear from, you know, residents, they, they just want their question answered. They want good employees, good service. And I think a lot of, you know, a lot of the feedback you get is, "Why is it this way? Why is it that way?" Like, at the end of the day, we wanna provide services to the community in the most cost-effective, process-effective way. And I think moving to this model for our town, given our size, given where we are, makes the most sense.
Okay.
We don't need...
Plus, it ensures, as I said, that you're using the best HR practices and that you're not gonna run afoul of some bad things down the line.
And that's great when you have a, and we're talking future, we're not talking people, but, you know, there does need to be oversight because if you get the wrong person, if you have the right person in that role, fantastic. You have the wrong person in the role, you need the ability to, to, you know, aside from the ability to just fire that person, you need some oversight so that you're not in the, in the interim.
Document it.
Yeah, so...
This is what we're gonna entrust in the town administrator.
Well, no, I'm, what I'm, what I'm referring to is what's the, what's the select board's oversight on that? Just to make sure that it's not being, that power isn't being abused or misused or...
Well, that's the check that we're ass, we're asking. It seems to me if you keep a, some sort of a check, so, uh, uh, you know, three fifths or whatever, so you don't necessarily need to use it every, every time, but if there are times when you need it, then you've got it.
What are the part, but going back to your, your point, for the appointments or hiring, what, we said school's its own thing. What are the other parts of the town where it doesn't make, if there are any, it just doesn't make sense for him, for the town administrator to play that role?
The library is one right now that's a question.
And why is it a question?
Well, trustees have hiring authority.
Right.
Okay.
And they're elected. I think you need to start, Scott, with who's independently elected. I've got schools, board of health, planning board, trustees. Is there anybody else?
Assessors.
Assessors? The board of assessors is independently elected.
But theirs is weird, so you...
This is weird, yes.
Board of assessors is weird. So you appoint the principal assessor, but the assessors remain in the ability to appoint all the other staff.
But they're not elected.
Yes, they are.
They are elected.
Yeah.
So we appoint somebody who's already been elected?
So we appoint the chief assessor, but they appoint all of their employees.
I see.
Which is weird.
Yes.
Okay, so you've got these, so the first, to me, the first line is if they were independently elected, then they have a line of authority to the citizens of Carlisle, basically.
No, but I'm saying that's something you could change through a legislative...
To the board.
What do you mean, good luck with that?
I'm just saying, they have a constituency.
Well...
And they're gonna, I think with planning board, it's instructive that Ryan had a memorandum of understanding. You can probably get there in that fashion. I don't know that you can get there, but...
Your town...
That's why we, we're talking a broader thing because I think that we've all reviewed this. They've had a committee, the, what was the name of the task force report?
Governance.
Governance task force, which really reviewed this and suggested this is a really smart direction, something to think about.
I agree, the direction, I agree, right.
But, but I think we, we have the ability to work to codify this and get there.
Okay, so let's go.
So I don't, I don't think, I, I think Barney had singled out Gleason as she thinks that it should be excluded. And I'm, I'm kinda, she's not here, but I'm kinda wondering why because I, I think, yes, it's a trustee board, but, you know, the points. But, you know, if we're trying to get HR as a umbrella for the town so we can have consistent COLAs, so we can have all, you know, effective town management, I would think we would have all, and now the school is separate. I'm acknowledging that, that's its own thing. But, but I would think we would want all of them to fall under that.
I, I agree. I think Gleason should be under there. First of all, for instance, they, they came to us several years ago looking for a policy for family, you know, maternity leave. So they, they do feel bound by our, um, HR policies. So why, we should, why shouldn't we?
Right. And as an effective manager of the TA, you know, we would hope that the TA would go to these organizations, the, the libraries, you know, the, the head of the library and say, "Okay, well, what are your staffing needs and everything?" And, and, you know, be knowledgeable about that. So it's not just the TA making the decision, it's the department head who's saying, "We need help."
Inherently, you know, it's, there's also the budget process. So those, those positions have to be funded through the budget, which the TA is involved in.
Right.
And my, I'm not envisioning a world where the TA is now running the library. In a, in a properly functioning structure, you'd have a TA who, we have a good library director and they make decisions and they intervene if, if and when there's a personnel issue that can't be resolved, right, or...
That's part of it, yeah.
In an ideal world, you know, it would be well-managed on both ends and business would proceed at a pace. But this is, this is really for when something's not working or you need to share resources or do something. That's when having the, the TA, having that additional authority to, to make it happen, I think, comes into play. It's not, it's not like we expect the TA to hire all the part-time, you know, interview and hire all the people working at the library. It's to manage when there is this conflict between a resource or performance.
Yeah, but we also... Yeah, but we also, also as well, want to ensure that all the positions are advertised correctly.
Yeah, oh, yeah, all the-
And all that stuff, and, I don't know, do the library go to you when they're, you know, they, so they already kind of do use our HR system, so there's, you know, they may not have-
You know, I think we're all in agreement on the day-to-day administrative HR functions. I think we all agree, we should take as much of that-
We may, but I don't think some boards other than-
No, no, we got a job to do, but, but to Travis's point, I believe we're all in agreement on that.
Okay, great, all right.
Okay, I don't think we're in alignment on appointing.
Okay, well, let's move to that then. Except the other one to, well, on the boards, oh, okay, go ahead, we'll move to appoint.
Well, I mean, that's where you started, I'm just going, right, so-
You're appointing committees, you mean, or appointing-
Well, no, we don't appoint, we clearly appoint committees. Schools, let's again go to independents. Schools, we have taken off the list.
Yes.
Assessor is weird, I don't know what to do with that. But I would say Board of Health, Planning Board, library, as it relates to hiring the librarian, I guess those three, where the function will, to some degree, the function will reside in Town Hall, to your point, at least, not library, but the other two. I don't know, I, I believe, and of course, we can go petition for home rule and all this jazz, but is it productive? I mean, should we acknowledge that those independent boards have that authority, but the TA and ATA will assist, you know, we can assist in the way that Julie was hired.
Nobody's not trying to acknowledge that they, they have that authority. What we want is for them to accept some guidelines about how they-
We should write that, we should write all that in, we should write that.
Execute that authority.
We should write in the process of hiring. They should hire according to the Carlisle process.
Yeah.
But, but what about when you have a resource in, one department has one FTE and another department has one FTE, and it's determined you just need .5 to share between the two, and both sides say, "No, we're not going to do it", isn't that where-
You know, I think, it's a good point, and I think if we could beef up, I guess the way of edit is to beef up the, so if, if at hiring and firing, we acknowledge that the independent boards have that purview, but in the middle, from day two, when they start to day T minus one, they come under TA rules, and I think TA rules-
Why would, I, see, I'm not with you on that, just deferring to the, I thought what we're talking about is bringing the hiring authority under the TA.
I mean, honestly, they'll never, we can tilt that windmill as all we want, I know our Board of Health very well, they will never, in our lifetime in this town government, see that authority.
But this is about, this is, first of all, for our board to decide initially, and to go out and petition them, and you're saying, "Well, they'll never do it", but it's really for us to send the message to the town, and it's the town voters at town meeting who are going to decide this. And when, if there is compelling reason why this structure makes more sense for our town going forward, I think we could have a, a shift, and I, that, that's why I, this Chair had really wanted to take this up now, because I think there's momentum, and I think there's cause to do it, because we're looking forward at our budgeting, which has been really done nicely for the next, you know, five years, and we're seeing these costs go up, and this is a way to manage costs.
Sure, okay.
Right. And, and, and I really don't like us, or anybody, impugning what another board is going to do or say, because they haven't been asked. And I think we need to give them the opportunity to actually do or say whatever it is that they're going to do or say, without us, you know, saying, "Oh, well, we can't do it."
Right, but I'm trying to play chess, and so then, after they do the predictable thing they're going to do, should we be, are we better served strategically, nuancing that thing, feathering it in, to acknowledge some things that they do? If you say the TA should take over Title V, or the assessor should take over Title V authority, they'll die on that hill. They will totally die on that hill, and they'll point to tons of case law that will defend them. So that would be a silly thing to do, it'd be a waste of time. So it's better, like we're doing right now, right, we're saying, "Gee, guys-"
You mean, take over Title, the staffing of-
No, doing, I'm going to grant you-
No, but that's not what we're talking about.
No, but you're, you're picking and choosing, I'm saying, they have a mandate, they have a mandate from the state about what they do, and they're, you know, and maybe, and Planning Board, I mean, they, all the boards have their things, and so-
But we're talking about taking on, attempting to change that.
I understand that.
I'm not sure you-
I am trying, I'm not doing a good job. If you said schools, why is schools not under us? Like, we want the schools. That will be a silly fight, it'll be a silly fight, because the schools will never, the mass, and what is it, DESI will not allow it, I mean, there's so much against us, no matter what we say. So we're better off saying, as we do, "Gee, we acknowledge that schools is independent, now how can we work together?"
But I thought there was general, there had been some discussions in that there was support in different areas for some form of this, maybe not in all areas, but that-
Right.
People aren't recoiling in terror from all areas about this, and that there is-
No, no, they're not, but I think there are a couple instances, you know.
In fact, when we had those Friday morning things, the Board of Health was on board with a central and a, a evaluation, not central-
I'm with you, I just said that. All the, all the care and feeding of the employees should go into Town Hall standards that is administered by the TA.
Yes.
But hiring and firing, those are red flags.
Staffing, so if you keep staffing in the different things, then you, you give up-
Below the level of the top, I would say that would be a TA function.
Well, that's what-
Below the level of the top.
In other words, health agent, assistant health agent, assistant town planner-
And every assistant is-
Everything, every staff position under that.
I think what we're trying to get at, though, is that we need management throughout, because, you know, the, the staff, those high-level staff are only reporting to maybe the chairs of those organizations, who are not in a, in a role of position-
You know, I'm going to, I'm going to give up, I got it, I, let's go for it. So, the question here is not whether, the question that you posed is, what Select Board check should we have? Like, so let's go back to less controversial areas, police chief, fire chief, town clerk.
This is, this is check on the TA. So if we were to authorize the TA to go to, to say, "Okay, TA, you're now in charge of all these departments, and they, the TA does something that we think is really out of line."
Yep.
You can always fire the TA, I mean, but that's a pretty dramatic-
But you didn't, I don't think you found it right, it's more like, it's more like if, and I hope he doesn't, but if Chief Amendola took another position, you know, like what happened to Chief Fisher, right? He took a different job, he moved, are we going to say, "Ryan, go hire and then let us know who you hire?", or are we going to say, "Bring a candidate"?
That's what we're discussing right now.
I know, that's not what he said.
The high, well, we're discussing at what level we want to have involvement.
That's exactly right.
But Kate was bringing up, the other, the opposite of that is, if we do delegate it to the Town Administrator, and is there a check that's an easier check to say, "Hey, you've appointed, you've hired this person, but we want to, you know, vote them down"? But again, I, that's a question I haven't asked the TA, and maybe you could chime in, but I think part of the-
You don't vote them down, you have to vote them up. You can't, he would have no authority. If he had veto, he'd have no authority.
That's why, that's why I think it's hard, you have to give him-
So I think you have to pick those assignments where we say, "You know what, you can hire everybody else, but these ones you have to bring to the list."
Okay, so what would you recommend of those ones?
Police, fire, and TC.
Police, fire, and-
Town clerk, only because we're just emerging from, we're in a transition, I don't think we can say, you know, I think it should still be-
Okay, Barney, Barney had said that as well. Scott, what do you think of that?
Yeah, it makes sense, I'm, you know, I, I see police and fire more than town clerk, I wasn't, I'm not opposed to that, but I wasn't clear on why the town clerk was being added to that list.
Just because we've emerged from an elected, it was semi-controversial even, to even-
Right.
-take it out of election, if we go the next step and say, because we said, by the way, the Select Board is kind of the firewall here. If we say, "Oh, no, we're only kidding",
Right.
I don't think that would go over that, personally.
But Scott raises a good point, though, I mean, the, the town clerk, I don't know.
Read the, go to part two of this discussion and read the position description, there's a lot of stuff in there, I was going to use a different word.
Okay.
But any, any staff that worked beneath the town-
Sure, sure, these, we're only talking three employees in the town, the, the police, fire, and the town clerk, we would, would be hires of the Select Board, meaning that the Town Administrator couldn't just say, "Okay, I'm hiring this person and do it", and I think that, I think that's reasonable, that, you have a good point about why town clerk, and I could see police and fire being very high-profile positions that are interacting with the public, and that there's huge responsibility that we want to-
But in this era, I would say, in this era of contested elections-
Elections, yeah.
The responsibility of the town clerk is pretty significant, and the reasons why those who did not want it to not be, who were against removing the elected position were citing the independents.
Right.
And I think we want to do everything we can to allow the TA to not get embroiled in a possible conflict of interest, even of his or her own, you know, inadvertently, right?
Okay, I, I think that, I'm in agreement with that. So you want to, as a board, do we think that that's kind of what we're shaking out? That we'd, we'd want to delegate hiring and firing of all the employees, except those three would be specific hires, and I guess firing, fires, right, or?
Yes.
My, my only question in this is, when you get into something like the Police Department, where the employees are, it's a specialized profession, is, it feels a little weird that the TA has the hiring and firing-
But they're doing it now, what, what, how's it work now?
He does it with the chief.
And they come to us with the thing, all we're doing is going most of the time, unless there was something-
So he's doing it, yeah.
Right.
Well, again, the, the, I think what, what I would want to hold the TA accountable to is, you know, your direct reports are these department heads or these, these different things, you need to be delegating to them, you know, and, and if, if you're, if you're getting too into the weeds there, you're not doing your job.
That's our, you know, that's our overall oversight, I mean, it's like any other thing that we do, right?
But again, the, my intent is not to create someone that's now taking control over everything, and, and it's someone who can now, when, when we identify efficiencies or staffing issues, you can now implement them.
That's our hiring decision, it's more, it's every organization in the world, when the Board of Directors hires a CEO, they give that CEO a certain line of authority, and they hire that CEO, one hopes, because they have confidence that that person will do a good job.
Yeah.
If they don't do a good job, they have the authority to broom.
That's what I'm saying.
That's what he's saying.
Which we still have.
That's what he's saying.
Right.
And that's kind of what I want to get to, personally, that's my view of it, is-
And we need to, we need to create a position that we qualified applicants and strong applicants will actually want in this town. Part of it, too, is making sure, you know, when the next Town Administrator is needed, we have a job that is actually appealing to people that want it, is defined and has the span of control.
So you, you're advocating for actually having no, remove Select Board oversight from even the chiefs?
What do you mean?
No, from, you know, the chiefs? No.
Why, I'm not, not understanding your line of reasoning.
I think he's on board with the three, are you not?
What, no.
Police, fire, and town.
Police, fire, it's fine, yeah.
So, so if we move on, we decided on checks on power, it doesn't make sense to have, you know, a, in kind of a, a way that, you know, we can easily unwind that or not, the, three-fifths vote or something, because the problem, again, is that the hiring process in particular, if the TA doesn't have the authority, and then has to come to us and say, "Well, I got it", you know, they could vote it down, and then we're back to where we started.
It's public, too, it's all-
Okay, so once, once we're given, okay, so then the last part of that is temporary appointments? Do we want to give-
Definitely.
Give the TA authority for all temporarys?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so I, I think then Barney had that as, but she said, "But require the Select Board to approval before hiring temp, police, fire, or town clerk", so maybe she didn't think that, but I, I think if it's a temporary one-
Temporary things.
Okay, so we're going to say yes on that. Okay, so moving on, HR authority.
Absolutely.
Management of Personnel Policy.
And also, caps, yes.
Okay, hold on, the TA wants to-
I just want the foreview and Barney to know, the Town Council's going to come back and say, "So right now, you've delegated authority to hire police to me, right, and we, we do a process that I think you're comfortable with. You would have to overturn your strong chief law on the fire side in order for me to have authority to hire anyone, fire." So, right, strong chief means, you hire the chief, the chief hires everybody else.
So carve, carve him. What we're saying-
I don't think you want to overturn that, it's just Council's going to ask.
Well, aren't we ruling by exception on those chiefs anyway? We've carved them out, right?
Correct, but the fire chief has authority under-
Well, he has the authority, he has, or she, whoever.
But that's what we're talking about changing, so that, the TA brings up a good point here. So on fire-
So you make it a not strong-
On fire, because it's a whole, that I guess is, how is that different? How is that different than police?
It's like a school superintendent.
You, because you've passed in the past a strong fire chief law, but not strong police chief. There is such thing as a strong police chief as well. So if you wanted to give the police chief the same level of authority as the TA, you would make him a strong chief, not in, in action in law.
Right, but we don't need-
You did that in the past because volunteer, volunteer departments are different, so you wanted to retain that expertise and knowledge in the fire chief.
Yeah, but we don't, I mean, if we carve out police chief, you can still recruit a, I mean, sorry, fire chief, you can still recruit a fire chief, and just bring him to us, which is what we're saying you would-
He's talking about the people under the fire chief.
No, he has his own authority, we can't mess with that.
Okay, that's, okay, we all-
We can be silent on that.
So that's another, well, no, that's another one, because we're-
Council's just going to bring it up, I just wanted to let you know.
Okay.
Well, it doesn't mean that they can't come under the HR umbrella, right, it just means that-
Well, that's what we're talking about, David.
No, 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 I want to be clear, if Ryan wants to hire an uncalled firefighter, he hires one, right?
If, no, Brian, Brian, Chief Soros, if he-
Yes, Chief Soros. If, but can we not put that person under our regular personnel policies, when that person is wearing the Carlisle Fire Hat?
We can, as long as the chief agrees.
Okay.
Okay. Is that a place we want to go?
Yeah.
I would say no.
You would say no?
I don't think you're ready to change the strong, strong chief law.
We're not changing the strong chief.
No, we, we would have to.
We would be, we would be.
We would have to?
Yeah, because we would take it from him.
So if we have a sexual harassment suit, crime, let's say, not suit, in the firehouse, what do we do? Sorry, go see Brian, what do we, what do we do?
You tell the fire chief who's your direct appointment to deal with it.
And that's it?
If he, he or she says no, you don't have-
Okay, so we say, "Brian, is there a policy in your firehouse about, you know, and he[1624.12] And he says, no, I don't have a policy.
Right.
We have no authority to.
That, that's one of the reasons that you'd want a strong TA.
That's not, a better example is, we want all volunteer firefighters to be on this pay scale, the chief doesn't have to listen to that, if he's a strong chief.
Right.
Most of them would, but you're saying you want all the HR functions, well, the, the appointing authority is what gives you the authority to pay, to, to do benefits and so the, there are exceptions. I, I think you can manage it by just managing the chief, but.
Well, I think it's, sounds like that's wordsmithing with council.
I think we wait until we do our next chief and I wonder if we could change it then.
Okay, so fire department, the chief in that will leave his, retains the authority for hiring fire, HR function, okay, so, anything else?
I was wondering, excuse me, I'm, and I'm not suggesting that we do, but, you know, we also have a finance department and are there any positions there that we want to maintain some hiring over, like the treasure collector or the accountant? I'm just throwing it out there because we talked about all the other departments and we haven't talked about that. And, and, you know, for that matter, COA.
Well, now you're cutting down.
Well, no, no, I mean, if we're talking, we have to talk about all of them.
We do, and I'm glad you brought it up, so let's talk about it quickly and then move on.
I'm not suggesting we do, but I just want to make sure we've talked about it.
I say no, and I, I mean, I think a lot of it just comes down to, if all this were to come to fruition, we would just need to manage the TA and make sure we're up to date with, and he has authority, but we know what's going on and, you know.
So what is the, what is the check and balance for financial fraud? If the treasure collector reports to the TA and we don't have a whole lot of oversight?
Do we now?
I don't know, I mean, technically we do because it's our budget, but in point of fact, we.
That won't change, it's still our budget.
I mean, that's the question, that's like why we have that argument about audit committee, like, at what point do we exercise our fiduciary responsibility independently of the people who are collecting the money, paying the bills and all that jazz, right?
Right.
That one I would say is a real, is something to talk about.
That, well, that's kind of an investigative authority and who investigates the TA?
You only investigate if you get a smoking gun. Well, you, a more robust process is an oversight authority that constantly monitors in such a way that we can stand tall and say, yes, we're confident that everything's on the up and up. Now, there is an independent auditor that comes in, so that's one check. I mean, I'm not looking for problems, but the things that I worry about organizationally, my own organization, and I would worry about here, are financial and HR matters that could result in legal action. Those are the things that you want to make sure you're keeping an eye on, you have some, you know, check and balance on that.
That, that does come later and we kind of had a, under, under investigation powers, but it's one of the points, and Barney brought this up, but maybe town council has a, has a thought on that.
Yeah.
They, they look at these, they help, you know, they could, they might, so I'll, I'll ask them.
They might say, this is, this looks good, but you really should appoint the, whatever, town account.
Well, let's ask, I mean, Ryan, you're a finance guy, how could, right now, if I challenge you, say, how can you make me, how, how can you give me confidence that Sandy and Kelly are not cooking the books?
So you passed a set of comprehensive financial policies and I provide you a quarterly report on whether or not you're meeting those standards that are then audited by?
Who checks that? I mean, where do the numbers come from?
The state and the third party auditor. And I think one of the, and I'm biased, right, but one of the arguments for centralizing power a little bit, I'm not saying change the entire town, is there are certain employees that I don't have the authority over, the boards and committees do, and I would, I would argue that the boards and committees have zero idea what's going on.
You're, you're, you're trying to prove a positive with a negative, I, I understand all that, I'm saying.
But you're asking me, like, how can you be confident in financial oversight?
But the answer's not because I'm more confident than the other guy, it's.
Well, you just answered.
It's the mechanism, yeah, so we have that mechanism, so I'm okay with that.
Okay, so we're going to move on, we're going to keep on target here if we can. So to HR authority, management of personnel policies, we've all said yes.
Yes.
Okay, cannot change personnel, can or cannot change personnel policies. Mechanisms like three fifths vote of the select board is the default, let the TA make the decision and then the select board can change if we don't like it, I mean, that's.
How do we, how do we know if it's made? I mean, we'd have to be recorded.
They have to propose, policies should be, I believe policies is the purview of these, of our boards, policies should come to us for review, they can be suggested, you know?
Okay.
You know, just really nearly change the policy.
So policies come before the, before the board?
All policies, like he does now.
Yeah.
He does all the work, we just review it, I mean.
Right, exactly.
And it's our job to review.
Okay, so that's how the personnel policies, so he can't just change policies, so we're, we're in agreement on that?
Right.
Okay, this is why we're talking about it.
Yeah.
Okay, who does not come under the HR umbrella, that's kind, we've already kind of discussed that.
Well, even some of the school personnel are coming under, aren't they, for certain functions of HR?
Do they have their own personnel manual, lobby?
They do.
Oh.
Yeah.
Is it lined up with ours?
We can review that.
We should, I mean, that's something, I don't know if you want to bylaw it, I think that's, departments working closely together to win.
Yeah, well, the thing is, they don't have an HR department at the school.
No, but they do use our.
And they're using our function.
Right.
So, it, that, which is another argument for the rest, it's just that even the school, which statutorily doesn't have to, is, it, it argues that the rest of the town should also be using our HR function and everybody should be in the same umbrella, right?
And that's what we try to get.
Which would be a good, I mean, I think, okay, but we've said the fire department is one other that does not.
Well, yeah.
Okay, so we're, no, I'm just trying to be clear.
Yeah, you're right.
So we're fire department and school, but we have said that at this point we think that the library is another one that should, right?
Yeah.
Sure, it's funded, if it's staff funded by the town budget.
Yep, okay.
Yeah.
All right, I'm just want to, okay.
I mean, I think we should also just keep this as simple and consistent, I mean, there's a reason to not do it for fire that we can explain, but if we get into this thing where it's like this, but not this, people start looking at you like.
Right, right. But that's government too, everyone's receptions for everything.
Yeah, but I think.
Simpler is better in this. Look at the tax code.
Exactly, exactly. All right, but I like it Scott, we're going to be consistent, we're going to be consistent. All right, so collective bargaining, do we want the TA to be responsible for that? Do we want some level of oversight?
What do you, what are we talking about here, like, in terms of?
Contract negotiation?
Which collective bargaining is our extent here?
Are you saying you wouldn't have?
It's police and dispatch, right? Is that the only two, Ryan?
Dispatch, police.
Yes, under your authority, yes.
Which ones? Police and fire?
Police and dispatch.
Oh, police.
So right now, you're, you're kind of leading negotiations like on dispatch, but you bring us the status and all that jazz, right, we vote it?
So you've delegated running it to me?
Right.
With people?
But also, we've dealt, haven't we not delegated negotiation to you? With dispatch, we have.
No, we meet because we meet.
It's more the process you'd be delegating, so am I in charge of the process or not? Is the TA in charge of the process or not? You always have to sign.
Yeah, and we have to sign the agreement, but it's kind of like the police chief, if, if we need a new police chief, as I understand what we do now and what we would continue to do, we'd say, Ryan, go run a search and bring us a name or two.
Right.
We have a collective bargaining agreement, Ryan, run the process, bring us the contract and tell us what's going on.
So if the bylaw is silent on it, I would come to you and say, here is my process for negotiating, and you would say yes or no.
Right.
If it was directive and say, you run the process, then I would run the process.
Well, directive would still, in my mind, say, run the process, but we still have to sign the contract.
Yeah.
It would be like the chief, we, we let you run it, but at the end we have to approve it, so I don't care if you want to be silent or write it down.
I think we want to clarify and write it and say that the TA is responsible, but as you say, a check on that is that, the only way it gets signed is it comes.
Is that, right.
And, and right now, we, we meet, you know, in executive session and go over that.
Right.
Prior to it, so I assume, okay.
Yeah, I guess.
Evaluations of all employees, yes, except the ones we've excluded, which are the, the school and the, the fire department personnel.
Are we, we're allowed, he's allowed to evaluate the fire, isn't he?
Or chief.
Fire chief, yeah, but the chief's in charge of all of the volunteer firefighters.
Right, but we can, you can evaluate the chief.
Are they really volunteer if they get paid?
They're on call, they're not.
Oh, they're on calls, all right, all right. Firing, oh, go ahead, David.
But, okay, so the employees who are under collective bargaining at police and dispatch, do you eval them as well? No, or they do comport with the evaluation process?
Yes, both their contracts have it in it, but.
Okay, all right.
So the contract doesn't matter.
Okay, okay.
So here's the, you tell fire chief, evaluate all your employees.
Yeah.
If he doesn't.
We have no recourse.
Except to get rid of him.
Right, but if you tell the police chief, he's got to do it.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, fine. We're carving this out as an exception for now, the fire department.
Well, I mean, again, it depends, I don't want to get into drafting.
You can also require the police chief to use our process versus the separate.
If you were hiring a new chief especially, or even, you know, part of this is good management and working with people, so I, I guess we got to have.
Rather than say evaluations, I would say evaluation process for all employees.
Okay.
My strong recommendation.
This is not going to do the actual evaluation.
Is to focus on the personnel policies, that, that the, the chief executive executes the personnel policies and then write all the details in the personnel policies.
Yeah.
That's a good idea, okay. So the last one in this is firing authority, and I know we talked, you said hiring and firing, but the question is on firing, do we want any kind of oversight of that, you know, some three fifths or anything at the end, no, I mean, because, because I know we want, we're, the whole thing is to give the TA more authority and clar, not give him more necessarily, but clarify the authority too, but do we need a check on that or not?
My concern is practical, so say, there's an employee, he terminates the employee, then what, the employee comes to us and says, I'm challenging the overturn, my being fired, and then we have to have a public meeting to take a vote, and then what if you reinstate that employee now?
That's bad.
That the TA just fired, and it could be a month later, right? Like, I just don't see how that works, unless, unless there's a mechanism with open meeting law, I don't, you know, if there was a mechanism where you could say, here's what I'm about to do, and then we just.
But it's at what level? I think if we carve out police, chief, fire chief and town clerk, everybody under that can, we can do what we want, right?
I'm trying to say out of this, but the best way to handle this, from what I've seen in my survey of towns not Carlisle, is that the town administrator is required to notify you if they hire or fire within a certain amount of time.
Right.
So really what you want to do, avoid is not knowing.
Right.
Right, so it's notification, but, but.
If the TA fires someone and they tell you you fired someone and it was a bad decision, then you can take action on the TA.
Right, I agree with that, but what I'm saying is on those three positions, more than informing us, on those three positions, the two chiefs and the town clerk, you would have to, I guess, call executive session and tell us what you want to do.
Correct.
And can you, you can call executive session and have those.
I think it's a concurring.
Because those are actually not his to hire and fire, so.
But you have to tell the individuals.
Barney had a, had a comment saying, all other firings TA must review with the select board chair and vice chair before they're implemented, if no objections.
All, all other?
Well, she said that, but I'm saying that's a suggestion, the suggestion being, do you want to just have some check that is, but you've said all the, the board, you notify the policy is that you notify the board ahead of time, but I don't know if that's cumbersome.
Like, we had this guy that worked for DPW and he comes to work and he says, I'm not hauling brush or whatever he said, right?
Yeah, luckily.
And he walks off.
Luckily he quit.
Like, does Ryan, well, he quit, but does Ryan have to go up, turn it over to you? And, I mean, no.
I, I don't think, I, I'm in agreement, I don't think that that's reasonable, but I'm, I'm suggesting that you have a mechanism where the, he only has to go to the, the chair, just so that someone's informed, but then I guess it's hard to oversight.
Inform the board, I mean, honestly, let him run his, let him run his department.
I think with open meeting law and the timing of, it's just.
Yeah.
If you have a town administrator that's gone rogue, then you have to.
You got bigger issues, all right, all right, let's keep going. Management of town hall and town buildings, hours of day operation, yes, layout, physical, yes, creative organisms, departments, yes, okay, yes, yes, yes. Permanently delegated authorities, dog.
Real quick on that, all three of those are very reliant on appointing authority. So if you don't.
That's right.
You don't control the employee, then you can't control their hours, where they sit or how they organize their departments.
Well, you can control where they sit. You can control.
No, you can't.
Yeah, so you can control where they sit, that's correct.
Okay.
Yes and no, they may decide to not come into work.
That's different, but when they come, you sit in that seat.
Oh, okay.
The seat for you.
Okay, the hours of operation is the only one that I kind of had, because.
Let's put it in, again, you're going to where you want to get to, right? Put it in, let somebody fight it, that battle I'm happy to have.
Meaning what? What, what's your concern with the hours?
Magnify, people show up, they need to talk to the assessor.
No, I, see, assuming, you just hold on, I, I think that hours of operation could also be the, you know, the public facing town clerk, how, when is the office going to be open?
That's exactly it, yeah.
Okay, so the question is, you know, is it four days a week, is it three days a week, and you're saying, oh, we're going to just let the town, the town administrator decide that?
Yeah.
And, and I just think, I don't know, my initial reaction was that, yeah, is that that's a, a public facing.
So you think that should be select.
Political type decision, well, my initial reaction, it's not to say I'm, I'm opposed, like, totally opposed to it, but I think, I give it consideration because, you know, it's kind of like I brought up the last time, we'll get there, like, the signs on the, the thing, I mean, that's a political statement and just delegating that is, is I think.
I'm fine, you make a good argument, the, the argument I would, you make a good argument and another argument to support what you're saying is, it gives Ryan air cover if he has to go to us and we have to weigh in on that.
But the reason that we, I would support letting the TA do this is because we never do it, we just kind of, we, we duck every time that issue comes.
Well, but he'll bring it up and he'll say, you know, we have people lining up here at nine AM and nobody's around, like, can I make the hours nine AM? And we'll say, sure, and then we put our stamp.
Sure, and then, and then when we get enough feedback that people don't want it, we say, we go to the TA, hey, we got a problem here.
Yeah, we do.
And I think that that's reasonable, but, but the check, but the check on the power, I just, I hate to get so far where you say, well, your only check is really to fire him or whatever.
Well, you're not going to fire him, we're not going to fire him over his days.
All right, but if he doesn't listen.
So do we, on the first bullet, do we want to say?
No, I'm in agreement, I, I brought that only, no, 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 we're going to say yes to all those, I think.
Okay, there you go.
Okay, dog hearings?
Yes.
Now, wait a minute.
Cemetery deeds.
You're a newbie, you haven't had to sit through.
Cemetery deeds.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, signing warrants.
Ah, now we get to a thing, hmm, isn't there MGL law in this?
Yeah, so you, you have that authority unless you delegate it.
But we.
We can delegate it.
We delegate it to a select board member.
Right.
I don't think we should take that away, I, I mean, it.
It doesn't take much time either, so as a, as a point of, but why do we, why, why do we keep, what do you feel like you're getting from that?
Well, when I did it, I would sit with press and I'd look at the warrants, and I did it at schools too, like, what's this? Like you do, like your own business.
I did it, I signed it once, I asked questions too, I was like, what is this?
So you do it and you learn, and, and at least there's a sig, I mean, school board, I think everybody has, or sign, someplace everybody has to sign, I don't know, stupid, but at least one designee from the board that's in charge of the money should be looking at the bills, we're not so big we can't do that.
Does it slow the process down?
No.
Does that create a prob, I'm, that's what we, actually, Ryan, yeah, that, one of us has to come.
I don't have strong feelings about this, the towns are fifty fifty on it.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Okay.
It can sit down depending on the select board member, but I would.
I would tend to keep it in, because I do think it, at least it's some type of, just a check on it, all right. And then the last one is signs, where, that was the only one where I continue to think that's such, it's a political hot button now, but we've delegated it to the TA already to, in some respect.
That ship has sailed.
But, but what?
That ship has sailed, I think.
Well, it has until it erupts into, you know, national news. Now, that was for, for signs being stolen, but, or flags being stolen, but, but those are, there are a lot of people, not a lot, there are people who are, are not necessarily satisfied because they may be on a, one side of a political idea and the other, in saying, why should, you know, why should the TA and not the elected official get, decide the airtime? Why, why is that?
So I think you're confusing policy and execution though.
Okay.
Because the, um, all I am delegated to do is, is to execute the policy you passed.
Right.
Yeah.
This guy has a sign that comports with the size requirements, the date requirements, and the message is apolitical, he gets to bless the sign, right? You have the.
Or it's, it is a sign that is sponsored by a town entity, which in fact, the flags were by three town entities.
Well, so here's, here's a question then. So you can have the, we can delegate the authority, but we can, but you still have to conform to the policy.
Right.
So.
Of all these things, of all these.
So we could change the policy.
We can change the policy.
Okay, I, I, then I'm fine with that, as long as we can.
But by the way, it's, it's the same on cemetery deeds and dog hearings, there's a policy.
Yeah, and we, we can extra, but we don't need to necessarily discuss and debate every sign, as long as, and we don't, I, we don't, I don't want to be in the business of making decisions around which signs are appropriate or not, like, we should have a clear policy and.
We, we've worked hard at that.
Yeah, so as long as there's a policy guiding the execution, then.
Okay.
Right?
Yep.
And we have it.
And if, if it's not working, we change the policy.
Right.
And we can still continue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The wheels are turning.
It's only because I've still hooked on the, and it's, I'll have to work, talk to you all about changing policy. I'm, I'm, I, I still don't like, or I'm, I'm cautious about the, the town employees deciding the signs or messaging that they want to put on there without a check by the select board or somebody that's elected about what they want to do. And I'll just tell you, the, the pride flags, you know, I knew about, I authorized, I supported, but there are people who don't, and I'm not defending that view, but I think that there's a, a valid reason why, you know, that, those decisions shouldn't just be made by unelected town officials or unelected town employees, but should be made by elected officials of the town.
So you're saying that we have erred too much on the delegation side on that now? Because right now, he, he, Ryan just informs us when there's been an approved sign, right?
Correct, correct.
Should we claw that back and go back?
Talking of policy, though.
That's a policy, and I'm getting us off topic, and I'm sorry, but that was just something that, that I have just, I've thought about from a policy standpoint, that I have, I just like to have public.
But you were talking about bylaw, so it sounds like that.
That needs to be a change in our policy.
In their policy.
In our policy.
To say, we, we're going back to the old days, you need to.
No, only for, if the town, if, if the school wants to put something on there, I, I think, or, or any town, if the firefighters want to do it, and we've all said, oh, well, of course, they can put whatever they want, but there may be some things that.
I'm agreeing with you, I'm saying, but the way around that is, we have to then approve each sign.
No.
If the school decides.
No, it's just for town employees, you said town departments, you, Kate said, town departments decided they wanted to do this.
No, 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 we're getting, let's get, let's go up a level.
That was a school committee in the COHS, that wasn't staff.
This is a policy.
We have a rotary, and, can we go in the rotary or not? Yes, in the rotary.
Okay.
So, so I'm just, let me just give the example. So, we do have guidelines, size guidelines, it has to be a town department, like a school or a COHS, or I don't know, what is it, the poppy seed, you know, I mean, all these things. But if the school decides it wants to have, we support Kamala Harris, and they want to put that in the rotary, we should have oversight and say, maybe we shouldn't go that far.
Or, or Donald Trump, or.
Or Donald Trump.
He's saying the policy prohibits that.
It does now prohibit.
Political signs, yep.
Political signs.
Yeah.
So the policy can carve out categories of signs.
So is, well, let's go back to Travis's example, is, what's that flag?
Pride.
Is a pride flag a political statement?
No.
In whose opinion?
The town, the, well, as long as a board, now, what the town administrator just told me, which I was, I'd forgotten, was the school committee voted to do that. So, in my mind, that solves that because I think that that's a publicly elected board that decided that that was.
They have no authority to tell us what to put in our rotary.
Okay.
They can vote whatever they want. So I think you're building an argument, and I'm not disagreeing, that signs should be approved by the select.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not doing that. I'm talking about, I'm talking about.
I think we need to revisit the policy.
Okay, well, we'll revisit that policy.
And then we can decide based on how that goes, where to put this one.
Okay, all right.
We're not going to solve this one tonight.
All right, but signs.
But I just, I'm not to beat it to death, but Ryan maybe made a decision, or the school did, that a pride flag was not a political statement, but in fact, it is a political statement.
Ryan, I will say, and I'm going to.
There's a lot of gray area.
Certainly, he has, he has been upfront on everything, and so there's not, we're not.
I'm not, listen, I have no complaints, I'm just saying, we have a job to do as an elected body.
But that's what I'm saying, I'm saying that I think that a, some board that's elected needs to have the, on a public facing thing, have, have a thing.
Let's move on.
Something. All right. Financial, investigative powers, financial and HR, like ethics violations, should they have?
I would like to understand, and this is a question made for Aubrey, Aubrey, do you fill an ombudsman role where people can come to you outside the chain of command? And is there a process for that?
Yeah, I mean, and we're building that, but yeah, I am that.
So if I'm, you know, three levels down, if I'm a DPW worker.
Yep.
And I have a complaint, I can go straight to you, I don't need to go through gym, right?
Well, it depends, so you should be going to your department head if that makes sense.
Say I'm not comfortable, maybe it's about him.
Yeah, exactly, then that's, it is where I come in, yeah.
Okay, now we get to the thorny issue, which is number two on this thing, but it's all wrapped up. What if it's about Ryan?
Right, and like, I would agree with the note of, you know, if you wanted me to investigate, then that would be.
Do we have a line of authority direct to you that's independent of Ryan?
So she should tell you, and then you would go to council.
She should.
Yeah, yeah, there we go.
Okay, all right. I mean, I put in a little verbiage in what I sent around this afternoon.
How does she tell us?
That suggested that, in those cases, they go to.
Or she just goes directly to council, and council tells you.
I think in those cases, they should go to the chair.
Okay.
So would that be in, in a ATA hiring or a contract or something like that, that that's expl, laid out, that that's a role of the, of the assistant town administrator?
Yeah.
And that's how it would get done?
Well, it would also be in a personnel policy.
Correct.
Okay.
And because there's grievance, uh, uh, portion in there.
Well, it could be grievance, that's one thing, like, this person's, you know, giving me crappy duties to do or whatever, but it also could be, I've observed an ethical or financial violation, and then I report it, and I don't want to report it through my department.
Right.
This is one of the, I think, I think this is a material weakness in the town's policies. So the, the inability to investigate HR, ethics, really ethics and financial violations, that has to rest somewhere, and I, and I get, the person who has that ultimate authority can also be part of that process, and that needs to be checked, but with employees that are not under your, under your appointment authority, I do not have the ability to investigate, nor do you.
If somebody comes with a complaint in that realm to Aubrey or through Aubrey to us or whatever, you don't have that authority.
And this is not just a Carlisle thing, in the three towns I've worked in, I've run into that problem as well. So I can say, hey, this is a serious thing, and they can tell me to go away.
Stay in your lane.
And I have done that, and town council still, but you don't have the authority.
Well, so that's a discussion with town council, but a good way to, can the, the town administrator bylaw nod to the ATA function as well? I guess it could, right? We could have a clause in here.
Well, if you had the, the other powers that we've discussed, then you would have that ability. If people are ultimately, if you have the hiring, you would have it de facto, the problem now is, the way we're set up, if someone's in a different silo, you don't have that authority.
Right. So if you said, the treasurer collector is appointed by the select board, I started to investigate the treasurer collector, I'd have to go to you with that violation instead of acting?
Right, that's okay, I mean, I'm okay with that.
But there needs to be some ability.
At a certain level.
To investigate.
Yeah.
Right, but we could give that.
No, that's what I mean, if we get the other parts right, then that'll take care of this.
Yeah, I guess, I mean.
So you can put that authority in town council as well.
Yeah.
But it's a little bit.
Well, but I'm still back to ombudsman, I mean, the, the function that I'm used to is, yes, Aubrey works for you, and you work for us, so that's, that chain of command that exists, but generally, if you carve out that function for very specific things, the employee who is reporting or complaining can go to that, Aubrey in this case, with the confidence that that's being isolated out of the hierarchical, and it'll be dealt with right up to select board. If we decide to have you investigate rather than council, that could be kind of our decision.
And we can have that policy, personnel policy, if, but for people under his direction.
Well, we, again, if we, if we're being aspirational about the way we do it, we can do it for everybody. Why, why.
So if we did all this other stuff, we would just need to update the personnel policy to reflect that.
Yeah, right. So, I mean, my view is that we should clarify the ombudsman role somewhere, under the ATA, and then as I wrote in my markup, and Kate seems to agree, if it is actually about the TA, it should go right to the chair of the select board, and then we'll figure out what to do.
Again, I'm not talking about grievances here, though, or, I'm talking about like sexual harassment.
Yeah, yeah, serious violations, right.
Financial violations.
Right, exactly.
Those need, you have to be able to investigate, someone does.
Right.
Yeah.
So how do, what's the consensus then on this? Is there one?
We would, we would make a point to update the relevant personnel policy to define that. Is that right?
Yes.
If it's not defined.
Well, I think.
But that doesn't help you in the, now, certainly, but that's the other part of the equation.
Barney put in.
The TA should have the power to investigate unless there's a conflict of interest, and then the boss to the ATA.
But for example, you wouldn't, this wouldn't apply, for, if we, if we got all this done, it wouldn't apply to the firefighters, for example, you wouldn't have the ability to investigate.
Firefighters.
No, you should, you should go.
I mean, depending on how, how it's done.
If it's serious.
You should, like, these should be.
Even if, even if we carve out the fire.
Side of everything, like, there should be an investigating power.
That can over, and that can span across where we don't have.
I, that is my opinion, but I think you're.
I agree.
We should, that's a point.
If I go to a board chair and they're like, "I don't care."
Yeah.
Then what do I do? I can go, I guess I can go to the select board, council.
But could we have a person?
You have to force that board to.
We force them, yeah, we force them. I mean, when you have serious violations, I don't care who we piss off, and I don't care if they want to sue us, we're going in. That's it.
Yeah, but it would be much better to have this done legislatively, and then it's not.
We will try to do that, but in the meantime, you know.
That's a specific point, we should get council, like, how do we do this? Is the right way to do it?
And I'd like to know the specific reasons, conditions under which we can terminate the strong fire chief. I mean, if there was a pattern, again, Brian's a great guy, and I don't mean it to be about our current fire chief, but if there was a pattern, sexual harassment, for example, and the chief was reluctant or ineffectual at changing it, is that a reason that we can broom in?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, good, so we got to, we should know those reasons.
Okay, we are running over, but I'm, I think it's important, we're almost done. Budget powers can be limited to, quote, CTA role and budget, budget process by law. I know Kate had asked about that. That was just, well, that would be getting, if, if the select board wants to move forward some type of process by law, and I think the rationale for something like that, and it could be just a policy, but a policy obviously can be changed, but it's something so that we understand as a town how the budget is supposed to move forward, whereas I think it's nebulous now, is that?
We have a finance committee by law where they present a budget to the town.
Right, but don't we want the TA doing that? I don't know.
Well, the way the.
TA doing what?
It's, this comes mostly from me, so there should be, I think, I said this to the finance committee last night too, that whatever process you decide should be codified, it doesn't have to be that the TA's in it or not, or whatever, it just should be, this is how the budget is done in Carlisle.
Yeah, and we should, we should.
That's a policy, but the overarching authority, the way I think Kate drafted or whoever did three, three, four, the town administrator shall prepare and submit the annual operating budget and capital budget.
We haven't done that yet.
No, no, I know, but it relates to the question. In other words, we can deal with, I think, what I'm trying to say is, the bylaw should be clear that we're giving the TA that authority, and then the process is the policy.
I'm not, I'm not, so what's the role of finance committee?
Well, that's what they.
Well, that, that, the role of the, the finance committee, if we've got a budget process by law, that role would be defined in that. So the, the process would be that the TA, you know, initiates, you know, this or that, and then by such and such a date, you know, before the, or so many days before.
Right.
Thing, goes to the finance committee and presents this and that, and the finance committee then does their hearings and.
Yeah, yeah.
Whatever.
But that's, isn't that, that's a policy, not a.
I think, yeah.
We're not looking to say, you're in charge of the budget, you present the budget to town, and then.
Oh, no.
Yeah, okay. So this isn't really.
So if we had a policy that said, you, you would bring a budget to the finance committee, that would suffice, this doesn't need to be.
Just lays out the steps in the.
It doesn't need to be a TA bylaw, or.
Budget policy bylaw.
I'm asking.
His role in the process might be, well, no, we'd have a policy, we would have a policy that would define your role in the timeline, in the steps.
The anecdote I keep saying is, it took me six or so months to understand how Carlisle budgets, because there's a lot of people who have different views on how Carlisle budgets. It would be more transparent and easier for employees to assist in the budget process if it was clearly laid out, this is how the budget's done. How, whatever the details are in that.
Right.
Doesn't matter to me and staff, it's just that we know what our role is.
Right.
And then, it doesn't matter if your boards change, or your committees change, or your staff changes, it's done.
Could that be done as just a policy? That's the question.
Yeah.
So, so I would think that we don't need to go into a TA bylaw to.
Okay, so you're saying it would not be in the bylaw.
But we should, we should put it on the list of things for FinCom to.
Right.
To start working on is.
So CTA role and budget process policy.
Right now, it's sort of directed.
Because I don't, yeah, I don't know, we're, we're just, he's got the, well, he would have a policy, the TA coming in.
The town has the ultimate authority on the budget, right?
Right.
And that's not going away.
But a new, but he, I think what, what Ryan was mentioning was just the process, so if he's got to submit a budget to FinCom, let's codify that somewhere.
Right, but the bylaw, we're not delegating, then it sounds like we're not wanting to delegate as it's written here, and I realize we're not drafting at the moment.
It's a policy, we mean.
Right, and so that's why I'm taking it back a step, are we, are we interested in doing that? It sounds like we're not.
We're just doing a policy.
We just do a policy, okay, policy, all right.
Just change the word bylaw to policy on this.
And the, okay.
Budget powers and budget process policy, all right.
That's said as word for word from the government task force finding, is that the TA's role in the budget should be clear.
Yes, absolutely.
It doesn't say that the TA should have the budget, I think that'd be silly.
No, and the, it, your role in the process should be clear, and the main milestones in the process should be defined.
Yeah, and we should review the governance report again, because they did have some language about the FinCom.
Yeah, FinCom didn't much like their language.
So we should, we should just review that, or make sure that everything lines up.
Okay, all right, well, the last one, I think, is the other requirements, TA to conduct regular meetings with department heads and report to the select board. You know, it could be very prescriptive if we wanted, it could be silent, I mean.
It's a policy thing again, like, if we want to have a, like, do we want to put a bylaw that says you must meet with us?
You're right, it's, it seems in stone if it's a bylaw. You're right, it's, it seems in stone if it's a bylaw.
I think it's just a-
It's really-
If there are key things we want-
Do we want that?
To operate in a certain way, you can say, submit a quarterly report, or something like that.
Well, on the other hand, if it's not in the bylaw, there could be department heads who refuse to be, to go to the meeting. And so, we want to require the, the department heads to attend those meetings.
Wait, no, because the department heads, if you're talking about daytime department heads, are all under, you know, the, the view of the TA. So, you're not going to the meeting, you're not doing your job.
I don't want to show up to work today.
Yeah, right, right. So, I, I, I would tend to think that if we can, if we're committed on the meeting-
I'm not sure that's right.
People need to meet with you, if you had authority over them.
Well, right now, I assemble a monthly department head meeting. There are, there are many that I can compel to come, and there are many that I cannot.
But i- if the other things were passed, though-
The bylaw would be the same.
If, if, if these other things come to pass, do you also need, if you had the authority to say, like, well-
You wouldn't.
You don't come to the meeting, and we have a problem.
So, this sentence would not give me that authority. Saying to hold department head meetings would not give me the authority to tell an employee that I don't oversee to come-
But we're saying if all that comes to pass-
If all that's reporting to you.
Then you don't even need it.
You wouldn't need it.
You don't need it, all right, so it's superfluous, so we-
Yeah, that's, I think we're, it's just-
Okay.
I'm very glad we're not trying to get this in for fault-telling, which is, this is complicated.
Well, that's why we're, that's why we're stepping back, and we're doing this in logical steps. TA maintain an organizational chart, again, that's a policy.
Right.
Of how we would-
That's also a job description.
Right, of how we would like, or things that the Select Board would like to see from the TA. Prepare and submit annual operating budget and capital budget. That's a policy, all right.
That's back to the budget.
Yep, okay. So, I think unless there's anything else, Barney had said, formalize the current practice that the TA report should include, be included on every Select Board agenda. I think that's another policy.
It's a policy.
Policy, okay.
TA report.
Okay.
Okay, good.
All right.
So, the next step is to clean this up and ask council to help us.
Well, yeah, what, what the next step is, we're, I'm going to take this and all of our kind of consensus and put it into a draft-type bylaw, or at least write it up and then get it to the attorneys to maybe put it in a draft form, and also to have them get back to us on those types of things, what would need to happen legislatively or not, based on what we want to see. And then, from there, once we are in agreement that this is the type of bylaw we want to put forward, we need to go out and really do our advocacy and try and, you know-
So, remind me, because I remember we talked about writing a bylaw that hews to our own authority and getting that passed at whatever time of year we do it, and separately then petitioning the MGL for the home rule changes we want, and then again, change the bylaw after.
I think we should do it all at once.
But again, let's, let's talk about that, we're, we're at the end of this, let's talk about that question at the next one, once we figure out what we're-
Well, it matters to how you inform council.
I think, I, I mean, my, my view is, we don't want to split, especially, we were talking about for the fall and spring, if we're, if we're looking at spring, you just go with one.
Right.
But can we vote a bylaw that, can we vote a bylaw that, sorry, can we vote a bylaw that exceeds our authority?
Exceeds our authority?
Exceeds.
Exceeds, no, we can't.
No, so, you, I think, you go, again, we probably need another session with council.
We will.
Before you get, send them off drafting, because I'm not clear, I can see that we can write this bylaw within our own swim lane, and-
But that's the whole conversation we had, is, if you want to expand into the other areas, then you need MGL, you need to go to MGL. They need to tell us what parts of this need the MGL.
Right.
And if there are parts that, they're just like, you can't do that.
Right.
There's no world.
Now, we have an idea of where, what we want.
Let me know, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and we'll, and they'll tell us what's currently out of our authority.
All right, all right, let's move on.
Yep.
All right.
All right, so, we done the-
Town clerk hiring process.
Yeah.
Aubrey.
All right.
Oh, you've waited to the end here. Thank you, you are-
Maybe I'll move his laptop to show it on the Zoom.
That'd be great.
We, we drove Ryan out of here.
Yeah. Your newfound powers of leaving.
Do you find a power cord?
No.
Do you want me to, well, it's too late now. So-
All right, take it away.
Sure.
USBC.
So, as you know, we're going to start the hiring process for the permanent town clerk position. Being mindful that this is the first appointed town clerk for the town, you know, we want to make sure that this is an involved process, right? It's a really important position, and so, we want to make sure that there's input from various stakeholders. So, I'd like to make this, you know, fairly formal process, so after tonight, if we can get a job description approved, we can get that posted as soon as tomorrow, and then we could give a few weeks to gather applications, and then, in the meantime, I'll put together an interview panel.
Good.
And that will consist of a couple Select Board members, two staff members, two community members, and myself. So, I'll, I'll also be reaching out for any interested community members for this panel.
I think Barney already volunteered.
Yes, so that's, which is great. And so, then after that, we'll, I'll give some time for the panel to select candidates and schedule interviews, and then we'll plan to have those interviews at the end of October, and then have somebody to present to the Select Board for appointment November 12th. And so, that, by the time that the election's wrapping up and everything's been submitted to the state, we'll be ready to start that person, and maybe even have a little overlap with the interim town clerk.
And how are we, between now and then, in terms of, there's a lot going on?
Sure, so it's-
Elections, or do we have the resources we need?
Yeah, so the interim will just stay until probably the beginning of December.
Okay.
So, that was, the plan is to just get us through the election season.
Okay.
And so, that, that's where this timeline is coming from. And that, and also, just from speaking with other town clerks in the area of, you know, being mindful of, of those who would be interested, would, would be likely to stay in their town until this next election.
Election, I see.
And, and if they were willing to leave before that-
It's not so good, right?
Yeah, right, so, definitely was part of, you know, timing it in this manner.
Okay. Great, sounds great.
Do we need a motion or anything, or you-
I like, I liked your edits, I don't know.
So, I tweaked, I don't know if you saw that.
Yes, yep.
I just thought organizations should just read a little cleaner, too, because there's a lot of duties there, you know? So, that's kind of-
And I'm not an expert on town clerk responsibilities, but I'm assuming this is fairly standard description. There's, there's nothing in here that's-
Yes.
Nothing missing, there's nothing here that shouldn't be-
It's fairly comprehensive, it was reviewed.
They build a stand set, you know?
What's that?
All those-
Physical requirements.
Well, you got to put that in, right? ADA stuff, right?
Yeah.
I liked some of your little-
Well, when we had reviewed our town administrator, the former town administrator description, they had to operate a fax machine, you know, so things do get-
They still do have.
Yeah, it's government, I'm sure they-
We still have to fax, and the town clerk's office, I, I, I can probably guarantee you some fax.
You do?
I know we do, for HR.
It's like if you work in a medical office, right?
Yeah.
They still love their faxes.
There's a few things that are still required.
It's so weird.
It's very bizarre.
Your little-
Okay.
So, I don't know, um, do I, do we need to have any sort of motion?
Did you see the edits, David?
Yes, I did.
Were you, were there any edits that-
Nope.
Do you like his edits, or do you prefer your version?
No, there wasn't really anything.
Okay.
You know, it, it cleans it up.
Okay.
So, do we want to move?
Okay, so-
Do we need a motion, or any-
I don't need a motion.
You don't need a motion, no?
No, go.
Go.
I defer to the-
As amended.
Yeah, so this, the, the main thing we're looking for is confidence in this process. So, the only time, besides the two people that are on this board, that you will see the candidate is when the final candidate selected is in front of you. So, they talked about you retaining this appointing authority, so we just want to make sure this appointment process meets this board standard, and then Aubrey will run it. You don't have to have an OML subcommittee.
Yep.
If you do want to do that, then we have to talk about a different structure.
So, you appoint the people on it totally?
Aubrey does.
I do.
Okay. Great, all right, I think then we're, as a board, we're satisfied?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Back to the TA report, if there's anything further.
Just getting back to it, thank you, Aubrey, for putting that together. Okay, we talked about the budget, you heard from the Safety Committee tonight. All right, so this came up, we, we are eligible for a Complete Streets grant, $500,000 in Complete Streets money. So, they are filed in October and in May. In, just being transparent, in my zest to try and get stuff done, we did have a group that wanted to finish the sidewalk, I can't remember the street, but toward, toward the center of town, on Concord Road.
Spencer? No, it's, um-
Paul Murway.
Paul Murway, yes.
Which, which I do think would be a worthy candidate, et cetera, et cetera. That was the only time that a sidewalk had come in front of me, and I was with the engineers, and, and they were like, we, we can put something together, and I was like, hey, this would be a consideration. Anyways, in a moment of lucidness, I called Travis and said, hey, I think the Select Board might want to have some more, more input on this, rather than, than me just deciding the sidewalk should get done, based off some community input. So, I've attached the prioritization plan, the level-three prioritization plan to this report, and it would be good if the Select Board could, at some point soon, review it and come up with, or you could have the Safety Committee review it, or some, somebody review it, to come up with, is this still in priority order? What would we like to get done if we had $500,000, so that we can take advantage of this, this grant while this-
Sorry, maybe you missed it. Where did this priority list come from?
This was a town planning process, was done in 2018.
By the Planning Board?
I believe it was run by the Planning Board, and Nitch, your engineers.
Okay, so there was, because I'm, like paving, it was, you looked at needs and-
Well, and some of them are done already.
Are they?
Not a lot of this has been done. It's mostly sidewalks.
All sidewalks, yeah.
ADA compliance.
I thought the-
So, the, this was required to be a Complete Streets community, Complete Streets is-
Number three was done, I think, right? And maybe number two?
Well, I thought number one, number two, number three, I mean, I-
So, there, there are two different, I mean, there's, there's a safety issue, which I definitely think the newly energized Safety Committee should weigh in on. But then, there's also this, I guess, philosophical thing about sidewalks, and how far we go with sidewalks.
It's, it's a budget thing, too.
Yeah.
And a political thing.
Yeah, well, and who gets first, dude.
And if you want them at all.
And if you want the what?
If you want them at all.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, if you want them at all.
I've been told a couple times that Carlisle does not have sidewalks, they have pathways.
That's true.
It's an indication that you don't want-
No, no, that was for ADA, I think. Wasn't it?
No, I mean, it's more like, can bikers, do bikers, can bikers bike around not having to share the road with cars? Can they have their own little, that's mostly it, right? Some walkers.
I thought it was the ADA, because of the compliance with the dips, and that we had to have them as not paved, because that way we would have to-
Ah, is that right? Oh, I see, okay.
That's part of it, yeah.
So, how do you get at that, I guess?
All part of-
You can't write your bike on those pathways.
Was there a committee that did Complete Streets? How did we come up with all? Planning Board just did it all themselves?
We used to have a Safety Committee.
Pedestrian and Safety Committee.
They did it.
Safety Committee.
So, it's kind of like now, the new-
I think they did it, and that was-
We could give it, we could dump it in their lap, I guess.
They're gone, they're so-
No, no, the, we just talked-
Newly constructed, safety?
The new Safety Committee.
This isn't really safety.
Some of it is, and some isn't.
You're right. So, does that mean everything will be safety first?
How much sidewalk does $500,000 get you?
Well, why not?
Not a lot.
Eight, like 10 feet?
You could, you could spend it all on sidewalks, or you could do some of these things that are-
A thousand feet.
Thousand feet?
Right.
Well, sidewalks are a safety thing.
It's not even paved.
Right.
I'm saying you could easily suck up-
Well, whatever.
I mean, this is a huge list.
You know, I, why don't, Brian threw it in front of us, why don't we, I don't know, I think this is a good thing for our board to, I know we, we have to pick and choose, maybe it's not, you guys can chime in.
Well, could the people who did it maybe present to us their thinking?
They're long gone.
Gone, they're all gone.
And the five hundred thousand, would this-
Years ago.
You just need to tell them what the project is, or-
Tim Goddard.
This was years ago.
You have to do it for-
Do they have to approve the project?
Most people in town live in-
Is there a certain project that would get us the money, others wouldn't?
Hold on, we got to-
All right.
So, they're gone.
I, I just think when it comes to prioritization, you're right, we could delegate it, but then we'll, then we'll have, but-
So, we should take it and study it and come back with our questions, or what?
So, Nitch is presenting this to the Safety Committee, just the program in general, and this report on the October 4th?
Invite us to that meeting.
So, you could either invite, or Nitch could give that same presentation to you at a future Select Board meeting.
I mean, probably productive to just sit in on their meeting, right? Because then we hear their views, too.
Do we have to have an open meeting for that, or can we just listen in?
If you're not deliberating, you can just listen.
All right, so why don't we just listen?
You don't ask questions, no?
Well, then we should have them come to us.
Okay.
Or we could have a-
Let's have them come, well-
Or we could have a meeting, we could make that a, well, you're, yeah, you're in Barcelona.
I'm in Barcelona, yeah, six-hour time difference makes it hard for me.
That's a Friday, they're really going to present this on a Friday?
Sorry, October 2nd, Wednesday, October 2nd.
Okay. You know, I defer to-
I won't be there.
Well, then, let's do it.
I'm out.
All right, so why don't we, why don't we just schedule them for a meeting?
All right. Sarah and the ESE officially submitted the Climate Leader application to the Commonwealth.
All right.
So, that's complete.
Was it accepted?
Well, it takes a while.
Uh, not yet.
Well, weren't we one of the first?
Yes.
Still, takes time.
All right, I just wanted to show you this quick video.
Oh, Carlisle's beautiful place.
Are you showing paving?
Look at that new pavement.
New pavement.
Oh, well, I can, I live down-
I'm not driving, Jim Hall is driving while I'm doing this.
I, I live down Curve Street, and it's, it's a beauty now.
So, that is the, this year's paving program. Reason I'm bringing that up is Newport Construction has finalized this year's road repair program. The only change order on it was Church Street needed a significant amount of additional pavement, change order of $17,000 on a $380,000 project, is, is pretty good. We feel that Newport Construction is a good partner, Jim monitored this, so we feel like the project was successful, and the treatments were completed on Curve Street, Proctor Street, Prospect Street, River Road, Church Street, and School Street. Greeno Barn is now completely gone, and the ground is level. All filled materials were approved by the Conservation Agent, and salvage items were properly stored for future use. Julie in particular, but the staff in general deserves a tremendous amount of credit for the creativity and oversight of this project, as do all the town volunteers and advocates that have been working on this project for 10 years. So, of course, there are many that wish it could have been done differently or not, but I, I do believe that this is a good compromise outcome. Jeremy continues for no money to, to run the Corey Auditorium lighting project, and I would love to say that I have skills like that, but he's got it, and I'm confident in the oversight, so is Stephen, so that, that project continues to move on. Tree clearing has begun for the dog park at Bantha Davis, and I attached a timeline for you to see.
Yeah.
Okay, we're, we finalized bids for the tree work and the grave restoration at Central Burying Ground. We still are soliciting one or two more quotes for the entrance stones and the Litchfield seat. However, the total budget project to do all of it is going to be slightly over, and the Historical Commission is going to move the cemetery entrance stones to a, to a future ask of the CPC in order to make sure all the stones are corrected. This is a very cool project, I'll have a presentation for you on it once, once it gets going, but essentially, it is lifting all of the stones, making sure that they're, they're clean, taking away any trees that threaten the history of the, history of the cemetery, and then redoing the roof of the Litchfield seat. Chrissy O'Shea has been instrumental in that, as a town volunteer. Building construction projects, the Library Building Committee received five bids, and they will be reviewing it next week, or, I'm sorry, Thursday. The Library Building Committee will be trying to select their OPM Thursday. Police renovation, so we are still, we're still in the notification and contract phase, but the, your renovation committee has selected an OPM for the project. So, I will be negotiating and bringing this back to the Building Committee for a final contract by the end of this month, and they should begin document review, finalizing permits in October and November, and then bidding should happen in December.
And how long do we think the, in terms of getting a bid back?
About a month.
About a month, so that would be, like, end of January?
At the latest. Okay, the fire station renovation, so now having gone through one and a half, Building Committee, I'm, Building Committee OPM selections, recommending that the, and the Chair can take this, but that the fire station renovation OPM review, bid review happened as standalone meeting. It takes about two hours to do it right, if everybody does their due diligence, to get a shortlist together, and the Select Board has retained this approving authority, so you are the selection committee for the fire station renovation OPM.
Part of this is to get buy-in from all of us, so that we're on board and we don't-
Right.
So, the question is, do we have a, an extra meeting, is that, that's right. Um, so the question is, do we have a, an extra meeting? Is that, that's right. So, because we're here, do you want to schedule, and I'll look at your, everyone, take a look at their calendar?
October 2nd?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
That sounds good.
I'm, I'm got from the 27th.
That's perfect.
So, week of the 7th.
Cancel your trip.
The normal meeting is the 15th?
We have one the 8th and the 22nd.
Okay, so the 15th?
We go the 15th?
October, we're talking.
October 15th.
October 15th.
I, I mean, I, I can do that, if everyone.
We're doing it in the evening?
Is the TA available?
Always.
Well, well.
Well, yeah.
We have a policy on that, don't we? The TA will always be available.
Always be available. Well, even when he's not.
It's, um, it's a two-hour meeting.
How long did you say?
Uh, probably two hours.
Okay. The other thought would be, do you want to have a daytime meeting, or if does that not work?
Not for two hours, I don't.
Okay. I'm asking, who knows? Okay.
If I'm available, that's also the day after Columbus Day.
Okay.
It would help me if it could be at 6:30 or later.
Yeah, so we'll just do seven?
So 7 o'clock, 7 to 9?
Sure.
Okay. Let's schedule that.
And at, at what point do we have a better sense of the cost?
You won't. You, so this is just criteria, this is qualifications only?
And, and I'm, I'm asking this question, so if we, I'm just putting the ARPA hat back on, in terms of when we want to finalize that, want to be synced up with this timeline. So is that mid-October still an okay timeline to do whatever clawbacks we need to do?
So assuming it went very fast, the 15th, you would shortlist?
Yep.
The next meeting, you would have your interviews?
Yep.
In public, so probably be at your regular meeting on the meeting following the 50, 22nd.
Okay.
Then, if you selected someone that night, it would probably take me a week or two until the next meeting to get you some type of proposal.
Right. Just want to make sure we're.
Early November.
Yeah.
We're not caught with, uh.
So while you have your calendars out, actually, the, um, planning board, I think, is planning to have an MBTA open house on the 16th.
Of?
Of October, at 6:00 PM.
It's already on my calendar.
It's already on your calendar, okay, so just good.
And what's the open house entail?
Is to, you know, let you know, let people know what MBTA community's law is, how we think we might be able to comply with it in this town, and what the, you know, kind of impact would be on this town.
It's going to be here at Town Hall?
Yes.
And what time?
6:00.
6:00.
I'll give you more detail.
I'm already pretty familiar with it.
All right, I've approved, we have approved, per your policy, three rotary signs, one for the Carlisle Community Chorus, from September 9th to the 23rd. This sign will also be at the transfer station. The community, um, One Community, One Goal sign will be in the rotary from September 15th to 28th, and the Run for Live sign will be in the rotary from September 2nd to September 16th. We've also tightened up what it means to be in the rotary, so there will be no more signs in the, um, and any that have happened have been by accident, so we're being very clear. In the circle itself, there is no signs. It is in the islands around it.
What is One Community, One Goal?
It is. In the packets.
Sounds blown.
Two communities. Is that directed at me?
Thanks. Uh, it is logos, kicks, and mighty moves. It's a fundraiser.
Is this for the kicks?
Oh.
Logos for kicks.
Oh, kick, yeah, kicks.
And mighty moves, yeah.
Yep, those are big.
Cancer.
Yeah, those are big, uh, community.
I read this, I actually have to say, I'll just say it to her. I, I've heard from Live, Live for Live, or Live for Live, whatever, you know, for years I've heard of it, but to actually get the note from Jody Marshand was pretty moving. I don't know if you guys read that, but. Anyway, she said, "Money raised is helping victims of domestic violence to prevent the tragedy that caused a bullet to enter my head, as well as killing my child, Olivia Marshand."
Where, where did you read that?
It was in the application.
In the application.
Oh, it was in the application.
From the actual lady.
Come.
Oh, oh, the R. Live, yes, okay.
All right.
All right, we're almost done here.
A couple discussion points coming up, capital planning, as we talked about in the financial forecast as well, which is updating the operating budget model, based off some assumptions and projections. All right, staff recognition. So Martha sent this to me, that summer reading participation went up 20% this year. Some numbers are here in the, in the report itself.
Yep.
Uh, five library staff members also managed to complete bingo blackouts, which requires reading 16 books, and Gretchen also joined in on this, because that's what she does. Also from Martha, all the library staff deserve recognition for their work in the summer reading program, but Jen especially is responsible for success, including working together with Holly and Miriam on joint programming. So, good, good, uh, good story for multiple departments.
Yes.
Some dates, I will remind you, I'm in Pittsburgh on scholarship, September 21st to 25th. And the agenda, which we'll be reviewing tomorrow.
The, the agenda's one thing I did want to ask about, because I know I'll review it tomorrow, too, but, um, the COAHS, we're, we're having a big discussion about, you know, kind of the, their, what their, um, services are, and the, the, they want to talk about a community center with us, but I think we really want to focus on understanding what they do and what they want to offer. As part of that, um, I was wondering if we combined, not that meeting, but something with an offsite in the Benfield property.
Sure.
But I don't know if that's going to fit, but I, I'm going to think about it and talk about it tomorrow with the TA.
Field trip like we did with.
A field trip, because the, the Benfield property is something, and it's, it, it kind of may dovetail in with the council on aging as well.
More the, more the affordable housing.
Could be that part of it, too.
No, what's the one you're on? Or you used to be on?
What, affordable housing?
The one we.
That nobody wants to be in.
The one that nobody wants to be in.
Housing trust?
Housing trust.
Housing trust, yes. Yes, I, and I really still need another member, so we didn't even get a quorum yesterday. But, um, yeah, the, uh, Benfield, um, has a lot of community areas, yeah, built in, they were.
That's a good idea to visit. It doesn't, I don't know if it has to be timed at this.
Well, I was thinking about, because then that's in our goals for the year, is to really focus on that building as well, because we need to figure out what.
I agree, yeah.
Okay.
I actually have on my list to ask Ryan where we are with the Key Fobs in there, if he knows, but.
Oh.
Started today.
At Benfield?
Oh, Key Fobs, no, that's the next project, after we do here.
Is this poll petition, P-O-L-L, or P-O-L-E?
Uh, an actual poll.
P-O-L-E, yes. You know, telephone poll.
P-O-L-E.
Oh, a telephone poll. I'm like, but poll petition, I thought.
Not everything's elections.
I'm trying to, went up Bedford with the poll capping.
Okay.
Yeah, I was wondering what that was, I should ask.
What, the poll capping?
Oh, capping, yeah.
Oh, they, Bedford, they got, someone climbs up the pole and.
Well, first they grease it.
They, oh, they grease.
And then you have to get up there and take the cap off.
Oh, it's a contest, I think.
It's a contest, yeah.
Well, no, one person does it. It's not greased, it's not.